Do my best to quick to recognize and call upon you. All participants should use the mute function and only unmute yourself when you seek to be recognized to speak and while you're speaking. Please remember that this meeting is being broadcast to the public and we request that you eliminate any background distractions you may have at your location. Prior to council taking final action on any agenda items, applicants or members of the public who are present in the public access area will be recognized to address the council. Applicants and members of the public who have pre-registered to address a specific agenda item through communications media technology will also be recognized to address the council. And email or written statements that have been timely submitted will be read into the record. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council again the option to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. With that, I call this meeting to order. Our invocation is brought to us by Pastor Delbert Rogers from Champion Baptist Church. Could we please stand together as he leads us in our invocation, after which we'll have our pledge of allegiance?
I just pray, Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this evening. Lord, we thank for another day to live and to serve you. I do pray now tonight that you're blessed, each one of the council members, our mayor. I pray that you'll give them wisdom. Father, as we've met here tonight, we are asking to invoke the blessing of Almighty God upon these services in this time. And Lord, we would pray for your wisdom as the folk discuss the business here in this meeting. We do ask to sing tonight in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Rogers. Could you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
You're here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
At this time, we will have a presentation regarding our water.
Yes, Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Before I introduce our Utilities Director, I just want to tell you guys a story about some of the great customer service we have in St. Cloud. I was going to do this during my time, but I think it's relevant to the discussion we're getting ready to have. I was out and about this morning and went by where they were fixing a, some meters where a pipe had broken under a driveway. And I want to tell you how it unfolded. The street sweeper was going by, they saw that there was a leak. They called it in and within an hour, we had crews out there fixing that leak. When I went out there, I talked to the crew, asked some questions, trying to understand what they were doing. They also noticed there was a sewer cleanout line that was plastic that was in a driveway and had been cracked and they were going to go ahead and then this is the water lines division, put a copper or brass covering on it so it wouldn't crack again. Again, they headed off a huge problem and some of those infill problems we have. So that's the kind of employees we have in our city and I'm very proud of them and I just wanted to share that with the public and the city council.
Excellent.
So, Marjorie Craig.
Hi, good evening. This is Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. So I'm going to start off with a, something that's probably more boring and then we'll end with something that's much, much more interesting. But I wanted to give an update on the sanitary sewer overflow issue. So I'm going to share my screen. I've got a presentation and I'm going to also have Cameron talk about the data part. So, hold on just a second. Okay, can you see it?
Yep, it's not in slide, there you go. It's not in slide, there you go.
Okay, so this is a status report about our recent overflows this year and it's something that we haven't experienced in the past. So, you know, prior rainy seasons, yeah, we definitely have flooding in certain areas. My own house is in a little higher risk area, so there's always a little flooding there. But we experienced some pretty intense rains, May through August of this year, which filled up the groundwater table and saturated the area. Then we experienced the intense rain events of early September where we not only experienced flooding, but we also experienced sanitary sewer high flows in some areas in the city, primarily in the grid area. And several customers contacted us saying they could not flush their toilets, they could not shower, and some experienced overflow as well. And we have some customers that sent us in videos as well, which we really appreciate. That way we can help find where the issues are. So, what we've been doing ever since that happened is we've been trying to figure out what changed this year to cause this. So the city manager, Bill set up a task force to determine what we're going to do, immediately, long-term, midterm. We've got two problems, right? So we've got the flooding problem, we've got the sanitary sewer issues as well. So Nassim has been designated as the incident commander. He's the Public Works Director, as you know. And we put together a cross-departmental team and you can see the, just about all the departments in the city have been really focused on solving this problem. So here's a really long list and I wish I had a bunch of photos to put in here, but that would have made it even longer, but this is what we've been doing, what we've been doing immediately, our immediate actions. So we pulled all the lift station data and what's a lift station? That's what connects the sewer pipes. You have the sewer pipe, you know, the waste comes from your house to a sewer lateral and that flows into the pipe in the middle, usually in the middle of the road and it's usually gravity. And since it's pretty flat in Florida, you have to lift the waste up and push it down to the next length of pipe. So it's just called a lift station. It's the same as a pump station, it's just in the sewer terms, it's called lift station. So we pulled all the GIS maps, the work order maps, we mapped the customer complaints, we brought in outside hydraulics experts and system experts to look at what the issues might be. We also conducted, collected additional data, flow tests, we opened up manholes, you may have seen us out there putting equipment in to get the flows. And Public Works was a significant help in doing a lot of, along with our staff, environmental utilities, conducting field reconnaissance. And they did this not only during the day, but also at night. So they were looking for what? We were looking for sources of inflow. So since the sewer system is primarily gravity, anything, any holes, any places that water might get in causes an infill problem and we believe that that's been the major problem for the high level flows. So, and this list of things, we spoke with our customers, I spoke to a lot of people personally, along with our customer service staff, our field staff, Nassim also did as well, city manager did, deputy city manager. We mapped our, the pipes that we already have lined and we, we collected and mapped additional information. We also, we listened because there were some concerns about communication with the public. So Mari Emma, we stepped it up, made sure that we let people know what we've been doing. And in abundance of caution, of course, we opened existing and temporary facilities just in case the high flows occurred again, just to allow an option for people if they needed to use the restroom or take a shower. So our hydro, our experts did hydraulic modeling, we evaluate all this data, not only separately, but together as well. So those were our immediate term actions. So the midterm actions, and we kind of started down that track, brought in a contractor to develop a strategic approach. And what we're going to do is further evaluation of the system itself. And so I talked about the gravity pipes and the lift stations. And so when you design a sanitary sewer system, you design it in like little collection basins. So each of those collection basins feed into lift stations. And so that, to narrow down or triangulate where the problem is, we back out from the master lift station to try to determine where those infill areas are. That's the approach that we, we use to also do the field reconnaissance and what we're going to do in the, in the midterm program to further evaluate those pipes and find inflow. So the contractor also that we're going to work with, we're going to piggyback on a Toho contract. He brought in examples of a sewer manhole dishes, pilot tests, and my next slide has a picture of that. And we're going to continue to evaluate, not only with our existing data, but we're going to conduct smoke testing and then of course TV lines. We spoke to a contractor today who will evaluate lift station five and calibrate the flow and then talk about adding additional telemetry to lift stations because we don't have data from all the lift stations because on how much flow is coming from them. So here is a picture of one of those, I don't know why this keeps flipping like that, one of those infill dishes or sewer manhole dish. So it slips under the manhole cover and so it keeps water from flowing into the sewer system. So we want to strategically place those where there's a chance that rainwater will get into our system. Okay, so long-term action, here's a list of what we're going to do and develop this prioritized phase repair program based on those evaluations and then we're going to implement, implement the plan. Also, long-term, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Public Works, Nassim, Parks and Rec, Community Development, Building Department, and Purchasing, we've all initiated a look at having an integrated water resources plan. And we probably will start sooner than we might have originally planned in the grid area to accelerate improvements in that area from a, because we need storm water as well as reuse water to irrigate with and we need to make sure that we're optimizing all our water resources. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cameron and he's going to just kind of walk you through some of the data evaluation examples. And the reason we're, I wanted to really share this with you is that I want you to know how much data we've looked at and how much time that we're spending to solve this problem. Y'all have given us a task and we've been running with it. And just because it hasn't been raining doesn't mean that we're not working on it and we're not solving the problem. I can't thank Public Works and the other departments enough for really working as a team, it's just amazing how much help the other departments have been in trying to evaluate and identify some of these inflow problems. So Cameron, I'm going to turn it over to you and you can talk through some of the data that you've been crunching.
Thank you, Marjorie. Cameron Crandall, Deputy Director, Environmental Utilities. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good evening. So the first thing we looked at was lift station five, that's our regional big lift station down there on lake shore, right, the northwest part of the grid. Some of the data we wanted to look at was pump run time and the flow rate coming out of lift station five. Most of the flooding and sewer backup issues were in the grid, so this seemed like the, the best place to start looking. So we gathered the data through our data flow systems, data system and evaluated it in our department and with our experts and consultants. And the first thing we did was compare the data with the large rain events, the rainfall data we collect at South Side and also through the South Florida Water Management District. And with that data, we found evidence of inflow and evidence of infiltration as we suspected.
So I'm going to be your Vanna, you have to tell me when to change the slide.
Sure thing, let's, let's move on to the next one. All right, so this graph, this is lift station five flow rate against time and I also have rainfall, rainfall, rainfall data. So the blue line is the gallons per minute. You see that it goes anywhere from 500 gallons up to 4,000 gallons. And I've circled in green the, the flow rate that is indicative of inflow. So the red dots are showing the, the rainfall, so on nine seven, nine eight, nine nine and nine ten, as Marjorie talked about earlier, we almost got three inches of rain back to back. And those, we had extended periods of time where we had extremely high flow rates and that, that told us that a large amount of water was entering into our sanitary sewer system. So this was, this is, this helped us get started, this helped us point us in the right direction, say, okay, we got to start looking for inflow. We started with lift station five, we worked back to the other lift stations that flow into it and we were able to develop basin maps and our lines crews and the Public Works crews went out there and did their field reconnaissance and that's how we kind of found some of these early issues. And we can go to the next slide. So this is a little harder to see just because of the resolution of the graph, but it's the same thing, it's lift station five flow rate. So I circled the, the green rain event again and you can kind of see over the next 10 days, I drew that red line there, so we have kind of volatile runtimes, it's up and down a lot and then after a couple days, it's back to normal operations. And that, that shows us that we're also having some infiltration issues. So when it rains a lot and the, the water table underground raises, we have a lot of percolation into our sewer system and we can see, takes a couple days to normalize and that also pointed us in different directions to look for our field reconnaissance. If we can go to the next slide, please. And just to, to talk about the rain a little bit, this is a graph showing 2018, 2019 and 2020, we've had a lot of intense rain events from July to September this year. We wanted to look back and say, why didn't we have these issues in, you know, the past years? And we think there's some, some other contributing factors, but one of the big ones is we're just having a lot of rain right now in a, in a short period of time. So looking at the rainy season for this year compared to the previous years, 2020 had six rain events that were over one inch in, in rainfall and 2019 and 2018 only had three rain events that were over one inch. Next slide, please. And finally, this is just kind of illustrates the amount of rain we got right at the very end of this rainy season here in September, 2020, 2019 and 2018 kind of all flow and we're slowly accumulating rainfall and then right at the beginning of September, our 2020 cumulative rain jumps up almost to 20 inches in these couple months and it's almost about 30% more rain than 2019. So we got a lot more rain, it's a lot wetter and a lot more intense rain events.
Well, thank you, Cameron. And I wanted to go back to this slide that shows some of the inflow issues that have been found. And again, Public Works, storm water and street staff have found many of these things. These are examples. Also, cleanouts, cracked manholes or open manholes. So if anybody, if you or anyone in the public and find anything or see anything out there, we really would like to know about it so that we can, you know, everything, every little bit helps. So we're going to continue forward with that and I thank you very much for listening to our update. I think you can see how much work everyone's been doing. So to give you a little update on the water system, we conducted some pipe cleaning this, this past week or line swabbing. And so you may have seen trucks out there, most of it was done at night. We give the people that are affected, we send them a letter, we email them, we, we do the reverse 911. We do a lot of things to, to let them know that we're going to be in the area. We were especially sensitive to businesses that may have to find alternative ways to provide drinking water or water to cook with. We do provide bottled water in the case of line swabbing because we have to do a boil water notice. And so we're finding that it's getting cleaner and cleaner. And if you do look at, look at social, social media, we've been, you know, in the past, I got engineers like me and field staff, when we're doing stuff, we're doing stuff and we're not good about taking photos, showing what we're doing, but we're, we're getting better. So, in fact, if I never saw a photo of myself, I'd be pretty happy, but we're posting photos of what's been happening, what the staff's been doing. And so if you look back the last few days, you can see photos from the swabbing and I'm trying to provide, not just me, the team is trying to provide photos and information so that we can let the public know what we're doing out in the system to improve the system, to enhance the system from the water and from the sewer side as well. So we, we, again, we listened and we're trying to enhance outreach and we had several complaints about the website. So we've been providing a, or developing an updated simplified website and I think the person that's helping us with that is probably going to tear her hair out trying to get all the engineers to, you know, speak plain English so, and get to where we needed to be. And Kathy, do you have the video on the pipe cleaning?
Yes, give me a second and I will bring that up.
So as a part of the website and the, the new webpage, which is going to be a subject matter webpage, will be ourcommunitywater.com. And this video, which shows what we're doing to clean the pipe from the resin, will be on there.
The final step in drinking water production is a filter that removes any treatment residue left in the water before it enters the distribution system. Customers called concerned about the discoloration of their water. The city found that the final filter at water treatment plant number four had failed. In 2017, the new city manager ordered an independent investigation. Utility staff hired experts and while they found that there was a mechanical issue, there was also a problem with material provided by a vendor, resin, which is used in the water treatment process. While the investigation was underway, utility staff flushed hydrants in areas where the city had received calls. Experts were hired to develop a targeted plan to clean the pipes, restore clarity and design and build a replacement for the polishing filter unit. Three techniques were used to clean the pipes. Unidirectional flushing, where flushing hydrants in a deliberate order pushes material out of the pipes. Ice pigging, where an icy slush is put through parts of the distribution system to scrape the inside of the pipes. Line swabbing, where devices are sent through the distribution system again to push any residue from inside the pipes. Unidirectional flushing is now part of routine maintenance. If we have any recurrence of discoloration, we'll swab and flush the pipes in those areas until it's all clear.
So that's going to be the, the website, you can, I believe you can go to the link now, go to the site now and it's still under construction. And Mari Emma, are you there? The link to the map?
It's Mari Emma, I'm in with Kathy.
Hey, I understand you've posted the video, right? On YouTube?
Yes, the video has been posted to our YouTube channel, yes.
Great, and we can send out the link to the, to the map if you'd like.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
So we expect to get the website, we're putting the finishing touches, the right photos and the right things together. And with that, I'm going to hide my video, unless you have any questions.
Well, first of all, we appreciate your leadership and all that you and Cameron have done, especially all the extra second mile that all of our crews have gone through. We just can't thank you enough for addressing and dealing with this issue. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, thank you so much for the update and I've been pestering Ms. Craig with all kinds of things I see around the city, like this, this is leaking and that's leaking and they're overwatering and so she's been really nice and trying to help get all those items addressed. I do understand the statement about engineers not being good about documenting, you know, what we're doing, we more have a mindset, get it done, we got to fix a problem, we get a task and then we do it and then afterwards we're like, oh, well, we probably should have taken a picture of that or let people know what we're doing, but we're so busy like solving the problem. So I totally get that, you definitely have to kind of put that on your mind. I wanted to give a kudos to city staff for getting that permit from the Water Maintenance District to pump water out of the ponds on the, on the lakefront to provide additional capacity in the system. I was really thinking outside the box, I was really impressed with that idea and that you were able to pull, pull it off so quickly to get the permit. I do understand that the permit is a very short window, so I would be curious if we could maybe pursue getting that as like a, a long-term permit to have in certain emergency situations that we would have that tool in our toolbox. I think that would be really fantastic. And I did want to know, and you guys might not have the update, but we have been talking about the flooding that we had on US 192 and that we had reached out to the Florida Department of Transportation and they were going to evaluate their design and we asked for like a quick turnaround, that they do this within 30 days and, and provide a report back to us and we're about halfway through that 30 days. Just wondering if we've heard anything from them yet about their evaluation?
So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Nassim and, and I was also amazed at the quickness that, and I used to work for the Water Management District, that Nassim and his team were able to get a temporary permit to do that with the pond. So he would be the, the one that could give us the best update and I'll, I'll...
Nassim?
Ah, yes, sir, this is Nassim, Public Works Director. May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Ah, yes, sir. Okay, well, thank you very much for everyone's awesome explanation of everything that we've been doing. So, and to answer Deputy Mayor Matheny's question, the first one about the South Florida Water Management Permit, we do work closely with the South Florida Water Management District and we do engage with them on terms of getting a permit though. We will, but we will definitely, just like you said, seek out to ensure that we can streamline the process in order to ensure that we can get those permits expeditiously, as well as look into this particular one to ensure that we can probably extend this one out further, further along. So definitely will look into that and talk to them. In terms of the second question, ma'am, which was the FDOT, on the status of the FDOT review, we've been engaged with the FDOT. They've reached out to us, asked for, they asked for some information in regards to, some information that we had in regards to the surrounding areas and we provide that to them in forms of GIS. And we've lost communication with them actually earlier today. They're developing a scope to do, to have a consultant, outside consultant to do a study, to do a full study. Also, we've been engaged with them during the maintenance inspections and they, they have a, the updated maintenance rigorous and rigorous maintenance is going to be done starting on Monday. As the last, we got that update from them as well.
Is there any kind of timeline associated with that study? I just don't want them to, you know, I know how it goes when you, you know, you have a lot of things assigned to you and I just want to make sure that this is a priority for them, that they're, you know, got a short timeline to come back to us. them, that they're, you know, got a short timeline to come back to us, not like a year or nine months. I mean, do you happen to know what their schedule is going to be to evaluate the area?
Ah, ma'am, this is Nassim. Again, we don't have a specific timeline on that. We, you know, we will get engaged to see, get the actual timeline based on the scope of work that they're developing on there. And I do believe that, I don't want to misspeak for them, but I do believe that they're doing an internal review. But I think they feel that this is important enough that they had a third-party consultant go through, go through the review as well. But we will engage for a specific timeline and come back to you with that.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir, may, Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, thank you. And Nassim, could you also talk about the DBI, who's their contractor for cleaning out the stormwater system and how we're inspecting their work? And they've done that and the last couple rain events, we have not had an issue on 192?
Ah, yes, sir, this is Nassim again. Ah, yes, um, so we've, we've met with the DBI during their most recent inspection out there, after we've, after the date that we engaged with both DBI, which who is the, just to clarify, DBI is the contractor, maintenance contractor for FDOT along the canal. And we're engaged directly with the DBI, the contractor, for, in regards to the, you know, communicating our concerns about any kind of issues with the maintenance of the ditch. And they're, again, they're, they set up a, they've changed up and set up a specific maintenance along the canal. You know, they're, you know, they committed to be more visual, you know, especially during the, during a storm and post-storm, as well as we communicate with them prior to, you know, we, we do our, we're doing inspections on a weekly basis ourselves and communicating with them on anything that might be foreseeable, foreseeable problem. And they have been very active to respond as well. Just like the same manager said during the last storm event that we had, everything was, you know, was clear and we did not run into many issues when it came to widespread flooding.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Trace?
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to congratulate and give kudos to Nassim, Marjorie and Mary Emma on getting the word out about a lot of, a lot of what they're doing. I think that's great. Deputy Mary Matheny asked my first question about 192, but my second question about the stormwater lining that we're doing on Illinois and in that area, that grant that was awarded. I doubt we have a status update for that now yet, but can we put together just a simple website for that as well, once we get all the information out there of simple project schedule, what's going on, just to get the word out about that set of improvements?
Yes, sir, this is Nassim, Public Works Director again. I understand that, but to convey, to put up a website to talk about the several projects that we'll have, that is a good idea and I'll definitely work on that.
I got three nodding heads, we're good. No, not Mr. Trace, thank you.
Good. And then, this is a question for either Marjorie or Cameron. You guys talked a lot about Lift Station 5, but the troubles that are going on there, is that deadheading the other lift stations on Lake Shore or are those still able to pump? I guess what's the upflow issue from there?
So I'll start off and let Cameron fill in any gaps I might have left. So Lift Station 5 is located where the old wastewater plant used to be, right there at Lake Shore. And it is considered one of our master lift stations. So sometimes you have one master lift station, so all of the lift stations come into a header, you know, to one master that goes to the wastewater plant. A header is just a, you know, pipe. And in St. Cloud, we have several, you know, master or large lift stations and Lift Station 5 is one of them. So when they designed the south side wastewater plant, which is at the other end of town, it's too expensive to repipe or redesign all the piping. So all the flow kind of always has gone towards Lift Station 5 or the old wastewater plant. And so it still does. It's just brought there and then it's piped all the way back through a force main to south side plant. So yes, Lift Station 5 is one of the only lift stations where we have actual flow rates in gallons per minute, but we do have runtimes with the other lift stations. So we back out through Lift Station 5 to each of the little collection basins that feed into it and analyze the runtimes and the flow and the manual flows going into them. So is it, is Lift Station 5 being overwhelmed? It should, and talking to a number of experts, the capacity is there. We, we think there's some inflow, something coming in that didn't used to come in and we haven't found the smoking gun. I found a lot of little things, but not the smoking gun. I should also mention that I've also immediately reached out to Toho Water Authority, to Todd Swingle, who used to hold this position, you know, with St. Cloud. And also, he has a lot of historical knowledge and general, you know, engineering knowledge. So that with our experts and our internal staff and Brian, our consultant, we've really been working hard. So Cameron, do you have any other additional insight on Lift Station 5?
You did a pretty good job, Marjorie, of covering it. Lift Station 5, force mains directly to the south side, so it's actually kind of the opposite problem. It's, it's, all the other lift stations are, when it's raining heavily, they're all pumping into Lift Station 5 at the same time. And Lift Station 5 is the one getting, where we're seeing backups at. So, and then, as Marjorie described, we're, we've identified the other lift stations that are flowing into Lift Station 5 and that's where also we're, we're doing the field reconnaissance and checking pump runtime and all that other stuff to see if there's issues at the other lift stations that are pumping into Lift Station 5.
Yeah, so we've probably always had, talked about infiltration as well. So we've always had a little, some level of background infiltration and which is caused primarily by the groundwater levels rising and falling. But we really are looking for some major inflows that are in our system. So we're, we're narrowing it down.
Councilwoman Trace?
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Cooper, are you willing to speak?
Yes, sir. Marjorie, could we go back in some of those slides where you had a infiltration, I guess, in one of the roads where it cracked and broke in? Probably five or six slides back? Or do you know what street that is?
Are you, are you talking about one of these photos here?
Well, it was one of the, I guess, one of the state streets right here in the grid. It looked like to me, maybe I'm wrong, but it was, you know, where it was cracked in the center of the road.
Yes, that's Louisiana, and that's the photo on the very right, sir.
Okay. How, yeah, that one's it, right there. How, okay, let's say you're going to go and repair that, you're going to go and cut that out, you're going to go down there and you're going to replace that portion of pipe and you're going to mend it on both ends, I understand that. Are we going back up to 13th Street or as far as we can go up there and then camera everything? Because if we've got one place there in the middle, it could be in Fifth Street, I don't know where that's at, whatever street it is, it could be above and below that we, in other words, if you patch it right now and fix this, what's going to happen another six months or a year on up further or down lower? That you're going to have the same, almost similar or more catastrophic failure that you've got here right now? Are we going back and cammering and checking and re-underlaying and put this plastic pipe inside of it or what are we doing?
Well, and I'm glad you brought that up, that's a great question. So when it's so wet, we can't actually do the smoke testing and the TVing. We can do a limited, limited TVing. So we actually did TB a little bit of this line when we, but you have to stop the flow. So once the, the levels receive, we can do some more effective smoke testing and TVing and that's exactly what we're going to do. So if we go back to my, even this slide here, it talks about the contractor coming in. And this contractor comes in and does smoke testing and they'll actually do some small fixes as they go along, whatever we contract with them to do. So whether it's install some dish, dishes under the manholes or fix laterals as he goes along, whatever it is that we, we need to have done and then evaluates where any small, medium or large inflows are happening. So that is the midterm, we're going to develop that plan and do exactly what you just said, exactly. And then, once we develop that plan, we're just, we're going to implement it. We'll prioritize it based on risk of failure.
Okay. Was, am I wrong? Did the city not have the equipment to be able to do that, to do and check the pipes and make sure that they're clean, there's sand is taken out, removed? Are we doing that or, I haven't seen it lately much, but I guess the question is, do we still have the equipment and are we still doing it? Can we do it on a regular basis in the grid? Because we've got more, more infiltration in the grid than it seems like that we've got anyplace else right now. I understand all this rain and I understand that too, but I'm just asking the question.
I, I couldn't have, what a great question, because I'm going to bring a contract here to ask for some contract TVing to supplement our own TV equipment. So we don't have enough right now to do all the TV work that we need to do. And so we're going to go ahead and step that up. And you're right, the primary, if we have infiltration, let's just say we have 10% across the system, probably most of that is in the grid and the older system, the oldest system in the city. So it's really important that we, a little bit of infiltration is okay and pretty, most cities have some level, but you don't want it to start to deteriorate the rest of your system. And I, you know, as you know, I haven't been here long and I've come to learn, and you guys already know this, I'm sure, and talking to a lot of our customers, they're, and the field staff, there's a lot of clay laterals still in the system. And sometimes there's nothing wrong with clay, but what I'm seeing is there's a lot of clay laterals that are broken or that are starting to break a lot. So we want to find all of those. So you're absolutely right, Commissioner, that's exactly what we're going to do.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, do we still have the equipment? We've been doing it five, six years ago, we used to do it in the grid and I would see them constantly in the grid and they were going from city or from street to street. And in the last five, six years, I haven't seen even that we've got that equipment. Do we still have it? Do we have the expertise so we've got the men that are doing it? And if we are, we ought to be having them seeing them in the grid every day or two.
We do still have the equipment. We don't have, you know, we have only some, a lot of the staff has been focused on the pipe cleaning, but we're, again, we're going to bring on additional resources to make sure that that happens. So there's, it's not, you know, it's, it's, we're not going to forget about it.
No, but I'm just, I guess the question is, we had four, five, six years ago, I don't know how long it was, but I used to see them all the time in the grid because they had infiltration, stuff like that. And there was probably three to five employees that ran that, that crew and they kept it constantly running and they kept it clean and we didn't have near as much problems. We, it seems like we, I understand we had some overflowing here, raining, but it seems like that we kept up with it five, six years ago, a lot easier than what we're doing now. And I guess the question, why can't we get employees to put back on that, on that same crew and get it going on, in the grid and get it straightened up at least as much as you can right now?
It's too, it's, the timing has not been right because it's been too wet. So we will though. I can't, I can't, I don't know about what we did in the past. I can only move forward from now. And, and what I'm, what I'm assuring you is that this is important, this is a priority and I want to make sure that we do a good job with the system. But we have to do it strategically and we have to do it in a correct manner. It's not going to be, we're not going to find it just going out to TV the entire system where we, that's why we've been looking at the lift stations and looking at the inflows and targeting certain areas. And because it's, it's, I've been advised by multiple people that it's just too wet to perform that TV work right now. But we will as soon as we can, absolutely.
Mr., Mr. Sturgeon, could you take a hard look and see if we could get somebody that would, at least where these streets are, have been flooding, extremely flooding and manholes that are popped out and all that stuff? Could we at least camera those and get started doing that right away if we've got, you know, the four or five employees that were doing it before? Let's put them back to work and let's get them in the grid and get that done.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir, may, Mr. Sturgeon.
That's exactly what we're doing, that's what we reflected in the report. We're looking at the data, we do have some camera crews out, we bring in additional crews so we can speed up the process and the smoke. But again, if those things have water in them, we can't camera them. So we are doing that and we do have crews doing that. And again, remember, we're dealing with the other water issue too and they've been helping with that. So.
Mr. Sturgeon, in the past years, I kind of watched them and I stood there and watched them cammering and doing that video stuff and they did it when it was, there was water in the pipes and they, they were able to be able to see and pull it through there. I watched them do it. I just, I can't believe they can't do it now?
With all due respect, I've got my ears telling me we can't do it right now, that we've done some, the areas we've been able to, we have done and we're continuing to look. We just showed you a significant slideshow that we're on top of this. The A-team is on top of this and we have found a lot of areas already through visual inspection and reconnaissance. And like I said, I directed that contract to be initiated to bring in more crews as hopefully it won't rain and we can get in there and start doing it faster.
Yes, sir. Well, I guess my main, my main concern is let's, you know, whatever you can do, let's try and get at least somebody that's showing out, that's doing these pipe, you know, draining and they're pulling the cameras through there and let's, people are seeing they're trying to do something with these cameras and pulling it from 13th Street to the Lake Shore. I think that would help a lot.
We are, we're on it. I will assure you, my team is on it.
I appreciate it, thanks, sir. That's it, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else. With that, we'll move to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be presented to the presiding officer too or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone in the chamber or online wishing to speak during the citizens forum?
Ma'am, I have one listed to sign, I have signed up for in-person and I have one to read into the record.
Okay. Why don't you introduce the person who's here to speak?
Yes, I have Teresa Melhot.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Teresa Mel, am I on it?
Yes, you're on.
Teresa Melhot, 2924, Colbree Circle, St. Cloud, Florida. I have four points I want to bring up real quick. I want to say Bravo Zulu to the Parks and Rec Department for trying to find ways to- to uh thinking outside the box to entertain the kids like the drive-through trick-or-treating and the cardboard boat races. And I also want to say I want to commend the utility workers for going above and beyond, working nights to fix the problem. I've seen them about town and also I like the good communications coming out. I want to say that it is unsatisfactory that this has come to this with our sewage. Um we should have been doing action all along instead of reaction. I understand the pipes are very old in the grid. I live on one street off the grid and uh off of Columbia and for days it smelled like poop down there after the rainstorms and earlier in the month. Um I think the city manager did a wonderful thing by getting the portable bathrooms and the showers in case they'd be needed, but still that is unsatisfactory. Us citizens pay a lot of good money for our water and our sewage. And we shouldn't be paying when this is happening like this. Now it's become a priority and we pay good money for substandard water and sewage services. And I I know this has been a problem a long time. It's not all of it Charles' fault. But even today, The Phoenix put out, which is an online magazine, talking about how the rapid growth has overwhelmed the systems. We should have did our infrastructure first before we started approving all of these houses because now you all can do what you want. But we get a hurricane, another strong, strong storm, and we're going to have to deal with this, citizens? I just um think you all should have thought about that before you okayed 330,000 new homes and still wanting to build more. Also, um my last comment is about, I want to know if there's a list of local businesses, nonprofits, and churches that receive money from the CARES Act funding and the COVID-19 Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan? If so, I'd like to get a copy of that. I don't, there should be a list somewhere. But that's all I have to say during the citizens forum. Thank you very much.
Mayor may be recognized?
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, sir. Ms. Malhot, um I'll consider that a public records request and we'll get you that information from the clerk. That's what she just here in the back there. Teresa, did you hear me? In wave?
Thank you. You can address that.
We'll address that. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, did you have something to read into the record?
Yes, sir. I have a Mr. Aliza Delgado Sanchez that has from 2211 Middle Way, St. Cloud, 34769. He writes, "The community of Pinewood is being affected by the transfer station and its bad odors in addition to the much noise of trucks lying down. We need urgent research and that is why we call on the relevant agencies and the mayor of St. Cloud to solve this problem, which affects the tranquility and the environment close to homes and hundreds of families adjacent to the location of the transfer station. Today, call the person in charge of the station and say that they work on the established parameters and that they can do nothing. I demand that you open an external investigation and review the regulations to see if you are actually working under the corresponding parameters."
Thank you.
Mayor may be recognized?
Yes, sir, you may.
Yes, sir. We've individual numerous times, um we've put odorant blocks out there. We've hired exterminators to make sure it's not a rat issue. Um and like I said, Nassim's done a great job reaching out. Um it's just one of those things, they live by a, you know, solid waste area. Um but we've made a lot of modifications out there, put up screens. So I I think we're doing what we need to. Um but again, like I said, we work for the citizens. We can take another look at it and I'll have Nassim go back and review everything and make sure we're in compliance, which I know we are, but let's just double check uh here, Mr. Delgado. So we'll we'll reach out then again.
Thank you. Appreciate you attending to that. Is there anyone else that you have, Mr. Worsky?
Sir, that's all I have right now. Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, you may, Mr. Matheny, Councilwoman Matheny.
Thank you. Um Mr. Sturgeon, do we have any um the like the landfill experts on our continuing services contract like S2LI or someone like that that, you know, has the expertise about landfills and and this particular issue? Maybe they could give us some different kind of recommendations? Do we have somebody on continuing that we could reach out to?
I'm going to say a funny guess is many continued services contracts as we have. I'm sure we have somebody that can provide that expertise. And if I could get three affirmatives, we will definitely look into that. I got three. All right, we're good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take care of it and we'll report back. Um give me, give me next month and we'll report back. Well, we'll reach out to Mr. Delgado in the in the interim and let him know that we're on it and working.
Thank you very much. I know that's been a real problem for them. With that, we come to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is an opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, is there anyone on the council that has a consent item that you're wanting to speak to or pull? Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the auditorium or in the council chamber or online that's requesting speech to consent agenda?
I don't have anyone that's requested to speak on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have discussion and or motion by council? Councilwoman, I ask you.
Uh motion to approve if we don't have any discussion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Mr. Trace, you had your, you're you're ready, okay? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Councilwoman Cooper, your mic is off. I'm on.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Russian carries 50.
Brings us to public hearings, item number one.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
If I could indulge the council, we have quite a few people online and in the um gallery, if we could entertain the Hastings Ranch uh council action at your discretion?
I have no objections for, that'd be a council action item, is it not?
That's correct, item four.
Are there any objections to our moving to that item and dealing with it first? There's no objections and we'll do so. Madam Clerk, would you please read item number four under council action?
Discussion on possible action on the final acquisition of 219 acres of property located on Jones Road for $5,750,000.
Mr. Sturgeon, do you have someone to speak to that?
Yes, sir. I'd like to start off and give them a chance to get up the um to get um the PowerPoint spun up. Um council, as you know, we entered into an agreement with the Hastings Ranch into a due diligence period for the purchase of the Hastings Ranch property. As you know, the city is growing and with growth, we are required to extend our municipal services. While one of the fundamental requirements of municipal governance is public safety, we also have a responsibility to provide recreational areas for public along with enhanced other municipal services. The purchase of this land and the necessary upgrades that will come from the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Fund, which I looked up impact fees and impact fees are charges imposed by local governments against new development to provide for capital facility costs made necessary by growth. The purchase of this land is necessary and the upgrades will come from that fund. The property meets many needs of the city, including the need for green space, environmental lands, and to ensure we have an authentic nature trail for people to enjoy the outdoors. With that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie Holt. Thank you, Mayor.
This is okay.
Hi, good evening. I I I believe this is Wendy's presentation.
Okay. Wendy, are you available?
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me? This is Wendy Colazo, Finance Director.
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Wendy.
Uh good evening to you, Mayor, and as well as all the council. Um uh the slide currently right now is, as you know, this is just a map representation of the property of Hastings Ranch. Uh my position on um this presentation will give uh will be to give the cash analysis availability for the purchase of Hastings Ranch. Next slide, please. Again, this is just a map visual of Hastings Ranch and the 219 acres um outlined um for the presentation for visual. Next slide, please. Um the property purchase summary and information for Hastings Ranch, as everybody knows, was the asking price of $5.75 million. The property was appraised at $5.75 million with an appraisal date of October 2019. Some of the prospective uh funding that was um outlined at that current time was a potential of grant funding uh with an availability of 3.85 million or 67% coming from the FCT grant, um with a city funding match of $1.9 million or 33% with a total ask of that $5.75 million. Next slide, please. The targeted grant opportunities I mentioned before, the FCT stands for Florida Community Trust. There is two grants. They were funded through the Florida Forever Parks and Open Space and um currently we're in process with um this grant opportunity. Uh we have taken a stab with the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant and um we are going again with efforts and help from our lobbyists to get another opinion on this and hopefully be able to attain the land and water conservation as well. Uh but currently the targeted one is Florida Communities Trust. Next slide, please. Um obviously, without any grants, the funding strategy and requirement would be 5.75. Um grants therefore that are not materialized, um we've listed and originally in the initial presentation that you had, we had listed a variety of options, which was either to bond out, um also do a lease payment and or outright uh purchase. At this point and after some of the due diligence period, uh we have opted to present option three was to purchase outright with a combination of all those available funds um and then reducing obviously the Parks and Rec Impact Fund immediately when we um and if we were to de- um purchase outright and uh pay the 5.75 million. Next slide, please. The cash analysis presented before you is actual to date as of a date of September 18th, 2020. Cash in the bank from the Parks and Rec Impact Fees Fund currently is sitting at $7.2 million. Please note that I'll keep the numbers short in order not to have to read and uh extend this out for you. So $7.2 million. We took out any less, um we took out any due to the capital projects with a with a totality at this point of $1.6 million, providing a subtotal amount of $5.6 million of availability, cash and bank. In November of 2020, we plan to make a budget amendment and in that budget amendment, uh transfer over $950,000 from the police impact fee, which is a repayment for the purchased land for um the Public Safety Complex. We also anticipate to add after discussion and confirmation from Osceola County, um oh about $2 million at this point for the District 3 JPA agreement. And estimated revenues for that fund between the periods of October 2020 and December 2020 have been estimated at $300,000, providing an availability total of $8 million, 8.8 million. Um this is going to be available through January 6. Please note that we have had confirmation from Osceola County that the $2 million would be available and deposited into our coffers before the closing date. Finally, if you take that $8.8 million and make the payment or purchase of Hastings Ranch by January 6 of $5.75 million, it will at this point leave a balance of $3.116. Um $3.1 million. What you don't see on the screen that um in in an added effort to maintain the sustainability of the Parks and Rec Fund is that in initial, the setup cost for Hastings property at this point for it to be up to standard for a municipality and with the input of various departments and the needs that will be um have been presented for infrastructure of $1.14 million, that has also been taken in consideration. And that subtotal minus that 1.1 million will still leave a grand total in the fund of $1.9 million and or a nice round number of $2 million. Also, please note that park impact fees will continue to come in um from Osceola County as well as standard park and impact revenue, keeping the fund healthy and at consistent rates with our policies and procedures uh for operational cost coverage. Next slide, please. Finally, this is just, you've seen this before, just I'm going to go very quickly through it. This is that Florida um Communities Trust. And the reason I gave you the timeline and eligibility is to um present to you that the numbers I I went through right now for the cash analysis do not even take in consideration if and and if we were awarded the grant. Uh therefore, you see uh by month and calendar year, some of the actions that need to be taking place in the timeline and also the eligibility and completion of that uh for about 60% of the total cost that we would have invested. Next slide, please. Uh I did the same thing for your land and water conservation timeline. Uh this again is one of those that we are uh reaching out to our lobbyists as um the initial stab at it um was denied and uh we are trying again to uh go at it again and and see if this is awarded. Um next slide. Timing of the grant funds are listed for you, that LWCF grant at $400,000 will be available or would have been available October 2020. Uh that is again, um we'll see how that outcome comes out. And then 3.4, almost 3.5 million dollars from that FCT grant um will not be available until about August of 2021 if and where if we were awarded. Um and of course, we've already prepared and like I've mentioned before, we're not even including this in the ability to uh purchase Hastings Ranch at this point. Next slide.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh Mayor Pizarro, I have a, I have a question. So you're, if it's okay, Wendy, um you're saying basically that this grant of 3.4 million dollars and the 400,000, which is basically comes to almost close to 4 million. If we do get that, then basically we didn't even buy the park. The county gave us 2 million. If we get that there, then there is no cost to the park. Is that true?
Yes, sir. It's uh my strategy on this that if we were to get awarded, what we would really do is kind of almost reimburse the fund again. And if we were lucky enough that the LWCF grant would come into play, that would actually go above and beyond the reoccurring yearly cost to maintain Hastings Ranch. So we would net zero a lot quicker minus the some of the infrastructure that we put in. So yes, short answer.
And do we have a grant writer on staff or consulting with us to get these done along with our lobbyists in Orlando and in Tallahassee?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask something?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. Um Wendy, you just like touched on it a little bit and I was hoping Dave was going to ask you, Mr. Askew was going to ask you. Um uh and I asked this in our last meeting, if we, so we're, we're not proposing to hold the purchase of the property until um, you know, until these grants come into place. It is possible that if we purchase with the Parks and Rec dollars and then subsequent, let's say August of next year, we do get the grant, we can replace the funding, even though we've already purchased.
Yes, ma'am, that is exactly correct. Uh Madam Deputy, what we would plan to do is is close at the uh time uh with January using, you know, writing a checkout from the Parks and Rec using, you know, writing a check out from the Parks and Rec Fund, and then once, and hopefully with award in August, we would be able to, on a reimbursement basis, be reimbursed for the cost that we spent based on the requirements from the grant. Yes, ma'am.
One more question, Mayor?
Go right ahead, Councilmember Matheny.
So if, and not that I don't like Mr. Cooper's idea about Stevens Plantation, but we could not use the county's $2 million that they're giving us for Stevens Plantation's purchase because it's not in the district of those impact fees. Am I correct by that?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Wendy?
Yes, sir. If I could ask for the next slide? Please.
Hello, this is Kathy. That was the final slide.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Sorry, Kathy. Overall, that is the cash analysis for you on the Hastings Ranch analysis to include infrastructure and also reoccurring costs that has been added to your paperwork. And if there's any other questions, please feel free to ask, and that concludes my presentation for this portion.
Since we've been asking questions, are there any other questions from council to be directed to Ms. Colazo? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Wendy, I have a question. As far as the, if we, if we, this Hastings Ranch, the annual totally cost when you buy a police facility and you're going to have to buy the place to live for them to be there, and a police car is going to be there, and you're going to have to pay for an officer there. You added all that into there. At least at one time, you and I had talked about it, and it was going to be like $18,000 a month. It came up to about $220,000, $30,000. And then you add all this other stuff in there that you and I talked about today. I think we're going to look at $400,000 a year, keep running down the road. You got the, got that, if you got that money plugged in that we can afford to keep doing that with COVID-19 comes? That's my question.
Yes, sir. If I've done my job correctly, I never project for the moment. I project for the future, sir. And one of the things that, you know, I'll actually, once I finish this financial part, Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Stephanie Holtcamp, can answer to the arrangement when it comes to the police officer. At this point, we don't calculate in the salary of a police officer for the reason being that the arrangement that has been done, which has already been done before in Chisholm, as I understand, is that the police officer, in exchange for living at a discounted rate on the park and providing the security, we don't pay, you know, an extra salary. But I'll let her speak to that a little bit more. In the reference of infrastructure in the police department, I not only prepared and with the help of the PD, providing the worst case and best case scenario is we prepared for a park officer trailer budgeted at $100,000. And then the trailer location, that includes utilities such as sewers, meters and stuff, we have budgeted not only for near, near the structure of the barn area, but we also budgeted for an away location in case that was happening, which we have $350,000 allocated for that if it's away from the structure, as well as $97,000. And that's just us preparing for the worst case scenario, not that that cost overall would, would happen. But we wanted to prepare depending on what happened when we actually got there. So the initial police department budget right now or cost for infrastructure rollout is $599,250 with the potential for that to be reduced by almost $350,000 if we don't have to place the trailer. We also have ATVs and surveillance cameras allocated to that as the startup infrastructure. And then to top it off, on the reoccurring and annual, the police department doesn't have a coster because, again, like I said, Ms. Holtcamp can explain the arrangements that are done when they put a police officer there. So we don't have any reoccurring costs as far as salary there. Other than that, like I said, I think we're, we're, we're where we need to be. In reference to COVID-19, every possible thing that we've done and everything that is coming right now, you know, I have taken the approach of fiscal responsibility, transparency with that, and as well as preparing for the worst case scenario. And I daily review what revenue impacts. So I would not present a situation where we could not A, afford it, and B, use the funds for the purposes that they were intended, sir.
All right, thank you. Could you, also Wendy, could you tell me, I hadn't asked you now, but I'll ask you now. What about insurance coverage? How much, what kind of annual account balance that it would cost to run that, keep it running?
Yes, sir. We, actually, I have an additional $400,000, not part of the infrastructure that you see for the $1.1 million budgeted, not only for insurance costs, because we're waiting on quotes when we do request them, and we'll deal with our insurance director with that. But I've also allocated within those $400,000 for any permitting fees that need to occur since we are a municipality and should be the example to the city as to how we need to permit correctly. So there's a $400,000 buffer that I did on top of that in order to cover for insurance and permitting costs, as well as an additional 20% buffer for contingency in the event the wheels fall off and something happens, sir.
So that would cover the insurance, then, what you're telling me?
Yes, sir. At this point, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Just to ask you, Wendy, that's her.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay.
Councilmember Matheny.
Well, first, I just want to say, how did we survive without Ms. Colazo? That's what I want to know, because thank you so much for all that hard work and a very clear description of what you've done. And you've also taken into consideration, you know, not the ideal situation. We've got a little factor of safety in all of the numbers that you've provided. So I really, really, really appreciate all your hard work. I've had experience with previous finance directors at this city where I was confused all the time, and then I would come back and ask a question, and I'd always get like different answers. So I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done. And also, I wanted to thank Mr. Askew for bringing up that point about the $2 million that would not be able to be used on the Stevens Plantation. That was a really, really big point that I think we all need to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sturgeon, are you wanting to speak? You don't have your...
No, sir, I'm not. I'm sorry. I need to be quiet.
Ms. Colazo?
Yes, sir.
All right, do you have anything else?
No, sir. That is all for me, sir.
Ms. Stephanie Holtcamp, are you going to speak to this item?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Stephanie Holtcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. I just want to talk about the, talk about the Hastings Ranch. There was some question brought up about that this wasn't necessarily in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And the master plan doesn't specifically call out certain pieces of property within the area. And the targeted areas that were mentioned, this property, or these target areas and plan were approved prior to the city annexing Center Lake. We all know as close to 2,500 additional homes. This, this property also allow us to expand our trail system. And then some questions about Susan Park. If Susan Park was so close, I don't know if anybody's been around the weekend lately. It's already overcrowded and parking is consistently an issue there. And also, this is, would be able to generate revenue as we took on the property immediately. If all of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
There's a question about the, the trailer and the police coverage and how that works.
Yeah, so the PD would be out at Hastings is similar to the way it's out at Chisholm. So we would place a mobile home or trailer out there for a police officer to live at a discounted rate, but we would not hire or hire an additional police officer. It would just be somebody that was already on, on the police force.
Okay. Is, are there any questions from council to Ms. Holtcamp? If not, is there anyone in the audience or online requesting to speak to this item?
Well, I have...
I'll start first, although Mr. Hastings is...
Residents that have called in, that are waiting online. I have three in the audience, and I have three to read into the record.
Okay. Like to remind everyone that please leave your comments to three minutes and try to avoid repetition if we can. Who do we have first?
Would you like to start with anyone in the audience first?
Whoever you desire. Yes.
First, I have Teresa Melhut.
Okay, Teresa Melhut.
Teresa Melhut, 2924 Cobre Circle, Saint Cloud, Florida. I have a few questions about this. Some were answered already by the slides. If we empty out that budget, that, that fund, and it's zero by buying it right now, what other parks will lose out? That's one of my questions.
Do you have other questions?
Also, I was last here in December 12, 2019, and I came because you all were going to sell the land at a discount that this Public Safety Complex was designated for. And I just, that was kind of a backroom deal, and I just don't want something like that to happen again that later on down the line, you all want to sell this at a discount to a friend or another developer or whatever. It just, because nothing seems permanent in this count. I won't bring up Splito, but...
Do you have any other questions?
So if we don't get the grants, because you're counting your chickens before they hatch, I'm just afraid that if we zero out that account, the other parks will be cut off. And I did want to know if that impact money fees can be used to outfit a park, like a new swimming pool, or ball fields, or soccer field? Or can it only be used to buy land? And how much has the Hastings Ranch made in the last 12 months? I want to know if it's, if they make enough money for us to recoup some of this money. And truthfully, I'm not really bored at this time. It seems like we have a lot of other things going on in the city, and it just looks bad. I mean, nine months ago, you all were going to sell another green space, and then I heard you all talk about selling another green space tonight off Nolte Road. It just doesn't make sense to me. How are the kids in Saint Cloud going to get there? Are they going to walk there? Are they going to ride a bicycle there? I mean, it seems like we're buying this more for the county than for Saint Cloud citizens. It is not central to any place here. I have been there. It's a beautiful place. And I think if we really wanted to buy, and this is my suggestion, why don't we make it a camping park? We have no camping, like Moss Park down the road in Norcussi. That way, people could go there for the weekend. You could make maybe 25 camping spaces there or something, and then it would get used all the time if you wanted to recoup your money. I just think this looks bad right now, and I'll be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Melhut. Ms. Colazo, would you, can you speak to some of these questions? Did you get a, keep a record of those?
Yes, sir. I was taking notes. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
To answer the first question about depleting the fund to zero, as stated in the cash analysis, after the park is, the purchase would be done at 5.75, there would, there would be a balance of almost $2 million, which does not take into consideration the revenue of all the impact fees we are still receiving month over month, which, as you can tell, with the estimated monthly revenues being at $300,000 over three months, that means we're going to make, or we do make already, $100,000 a month in park and impact fees to start with. So we would end with a $2 million balance after all is said and done, and continuously put in 100K every month based on impact fees. So the fund, to answer that, would not be at zero. Also with that, when we do financial strategy, we always take in consideration other projects and capital projects. So as I stated at the beginning, we took out already what is due to capital projects in the existing year, as well as the upcoming fiscal year where, if the budget is adopted for fiscal year '21, no current and/or new capital projects affecting Parks and Recs so that they continue their, their plan will be affected as those are funded and moving forward, one in the fiscal year '21 with the adoption of the budget. Impact fees, as asked on the third question about ballparks, swimming pools, by definition, the Parks and Rec Impact Fund by statute is money that's collected, right, by the city for recreation, impact fee ordinance. That's where it comes from and originates. Money by this statute has to be spent to increase the capacity of or provide new recreation facilities. Therefore, we cannot go into a park and add a new pool with impact fees. It has to be a completely new structure, new park. That is why we can use this funding, Parks and Rec funding, to buy Hastings Park because it is a new park to add to the Parks and Rec catalog. I cannot answer towards the camping part of that. That would, is outside my scope for Parks and Rec. That would be directed to that. And I believe I answered all of Ms. Al Hoit's question, and I'm sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly.
Mayor, am I being recognized?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mayor. One of my visions is to have primitive camping out there. It's such a beautiful piece of property. I'd love to see the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and different groups out there in a primitive camping environment, enjoying that beautiful scenery. The second thing is, I don't know if Mr. Hastings is online, and he's agreed to share what his, you know, some of his annual revenue is. And we've done that analysis. We believe after several years of operating, it'll be a cost neutral proposal for operating the ranch. Mr. Hastings, are you available?
Hello, this is Kathy. I do not see a Mr. Hastings registered.
Maybe you dropped off. Okay, thank you. Well, I apologize, but he told me he's estimating between $225,000 and $250,000 in revenue based on renting the venue. And so that's what our operational costs are in that ballpark. I believe $200,000, if that's correct, Wendy, that we estimated annual operating cost.
Yes, sir. In reference to that, not obviously having those financials, but we did base our revenue intake on the resident rate and non-resident rate if we were to rent the venue out for 52 weeks on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, with an average revenue intake possibility of about $249,000. And also, sorry, I forgot to mention to you, as you mentioned before, the net zero effect of revenue coming up, taking in consideration the swing of COVID at this time, we're projecting, you know, between the fifth to tenth year of neutralizing those costs at this point, so.
Also, the question was raised about could the land be sold to another developer?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I, I'm happy to answer that.
Mr. Manzaz, would you please do so?
Thank you. Well, there's two points there. First, the contract has a provision that the property would always be used as a park. So it would have to continue to be used at a park to, for the city to remain in compliance with that contract. The second part of that is if the grant money is obtained from the state through the FCT funds, that grant money, and I'm very familiar with those grants, that grant money will have an obligation tied to it that the property always be used as a park.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have someone else in the chamber to speak?
Yes, I have Betty Dampke.
Ms. Dampke, you have three minutes.
My glasses fall down. I can't read my speech. Okay.
You'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Betty Dampke, 4776 Hidden Heights Trails, Saint Cloud. Once again, I'm here representing our Norcussi Corridor group. And keep in mind that these are residents that live in both the city and the county, who work and play, worship, shop, dine, and a little bit of everything else to support this city. I sent an email last to them last week, asking for their input on the purchase of this property. My email box was filled with responses, and everyone was a positive. People are desperate for more open spaces and parks. New development has resulted in zero lot lines or postage stamp laws, which leave little or no space for children to play outside or for outdoor activities. We're desperate, we need these spaces, and something that offers opportunities other than more swing sets and monkey bars, such as the camping, or, as one lady stated in the meeting a couple of weeks ago, this could be an excellent learning opportunity for our children to attend from school outings and this type of thing. I'm not gonna be redundant and repeat the multitude of reasons for supporting this purchase, you know it. Moving forward, I was gonna talk about the funding and all of this, but Wendy has done a phenomenal job in covering this and explaining it and answering any questions that I think anyone might have. So, I, again, I'm not gonna be redundant with that either. As to the aspect of Chisholm Park being classified, it is. But Chisholm Park is primarily the boat, used for boating activities, whereas the ranch has many more opportunities for a variety of venues that could and will produce income to help offset not only purchase price, but the maintenance prices. If this property is sustained as a public park, it would be an added asset for your promotional values when seeking economic growth. Just remember, rooftops equate to tax dollars, but tax dollars do not equate to the quality of life. I urge you to proceed with this purchase. It is a plus for the city and for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dampke. Madam Clerk, who do we have next?
Next I have Donald Schreuer.
Good evening, Council, good evening, staff. My name is Donald Schreuer, I live at twenty-eight oh-three, Palmyra Court, St. Cloud, Florida, three-four-seven-seven-two. I'm taking this opportunity to speak to you about my opinion and my thought process on the Hastings Ranch. It's a great idea, it's a great idea. Being a professional PE teacher, coach, doing outside recreation and playing, I'm all for it. But unfortunately, I think we're pushing it too close to our finances and our, and how much it costs to complete this task. If we're gonna spend money, and we're gonna do things to help green space, let's use our money to enhance, focus, and clean up the projects that we already have. We just acquired Chisholm Park. Chisholm Park could be used for primitive camping. We only have a very small port of it, part of it, being used for Parks and Recs. In our master plan for the city of St. Cloud, one of the things that Parks and Recs wanted to see happen was have more ballparks, have more gymnasiums. The pool is always crowded and, and never enough space for swimmers and learners to go out and learn how to swim. I commend Mr. Cooper on his idea of using Stevens Plantation. It's like Central Park, it's the middle of the city. If you want to, if this leadership team wants to jump in there and be excited about Parks and Recs and do something better for the city of St. Cloud, let's put Parks in the middle of the St. Cloud City, right there at Stevens Plantation. Let's stop using OUC economic funds to pay taxes. Let's get in there and do what needs to be done. Let's stop kicking the can down the road and use that property to its best potential. Let's use it for the city of St. Cloud. I think we have a lot to offer. I have nothing against Parks and Recs. I love Parks and Recs, I wanna see more and more and more parks. That's only if our population was around a hundred thousand. We're not there. I think that's too much park, too soon, too early, and we're putting a cart before the horse. I urge you to think about your decision this evening. I ask that you ponder real hard about what's best for the city of St. Cloud, and see if you can't enhance what we already have. Let's put the money where our parks are. Let's don't stretch ourselves so thin. I thank you for listening to me, thank you, and please, vote against Hastings.
Thank you, Ms. Schreuer. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else in the chamber?
Well, at this time, I have registered, I have registered our persons to speak. First I have Jennifer Paul.
Jennifer Paul, would you like to speak? Are you online?
Yes, sir, I'm here, good evening.
You have four, you have three minutes, please.
All right, my name is Jennifer Paul. I reside at fourteen-fourteen Louisiana Avenue, and I'm all for saving the greenery in Narcissi known as the Hastings Ranch. During this extra- extraordinary time, city parks have proved to be critical public infrastructure in neighborhoods and building bonds between people in all walks of life. Economically, public parks can increase property value of residential properties. Large tournaments, competitions, and special events hosted in public parks bring to the local economy and can offset park maintenance operating budgets, which are thought of as high-cost centers. This COVID-nineteen pandemic has placed a premium on access to nature and physical activity with the appropriate social distancing making parks vital to the health of our cities. When schools, businesses, churches, libraries, and other civic and commercial places closed their doors, the parks were a place where people still could get away from the quarantine world and help people feel normal again. Now is the time to recognize how a central Hastings Ranch can be as a public park and green space and invest in it, rather than have zero lot-lined houses. We all need to acknowledge that once this green space is gone, it's gone forever, and you won't ever have this opportunity to purchase again. I would like the town council to preserve this wooded, wooded area as a nature park. Thanks, Jennifer Paul.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Madam Clerk, who do we have next?
Next we have Dirk Webb.
Dirk Webb, you have a... You have the floor, are you available?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to quality-of-life concerns and the ability to both attract and support business in our area, uh, strongly suggest that you approve this measure. Also, on the basis of Ms. Colazo's outstanding cash flow analysis, uh, we feel it can be supported. So, therefore, St. Cloud Chamber of Commerce supports this transaction, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Webb. Who do you have next?
Next we have Deborah Thoreau.
What was that name again?
Deborah Thoreau.
Okay, Deborah. Are you available?
Hello? Hello?
Deborah Thoreau, speak.
Uh, we would just like to thank the city of St. Cloud for preserving this awesome space, and so much has already been said, I don't need to repeat it. Um, one quick question, um, the road, you folks are inheriting a, a road that could greatly be improved. Um, the new design is absolutely horrible. If, uh, if a car breaks down, you're, you're stuck with no way to escape. Um, so, that is one thing we would like the city to, um, consider. But, again, we just thank the city for preserving this awesome land, thank you.
Thank you very much, Deborah. Madam Clerk, do we have?
Next I have Mary Lawson.
Mary Lawson?
Yes, I'm here.
You can speak, share your name and address, please?
Yes, Mary Lawson, three-one-seven-four, Waterbridge Lane, uh, Kissimmee, Florida, but I am right off of Narcissi Road. Uh, I've heard many pros and cons on the purchase of this property, but if this is a unique opportunity that will never be presented again, with the growth that is coming to this area, all the land is gobbled up. I have heard talk about Chisholm Park and other areas, they cannot be compared to what is at Hastings Ranch and the opportunities that are being afforded to the citizens. I also heard someone, uh, address the situation as how are the kids gonna get there? This is a destination for families. Our families do not have opportunities to gather together. The family activities at this ranch have been just unbelievable. The handicap activities, the festivals, concerts, the venues, opportunities there are absolutely limitless, limitless. The revenue opportunities will not be at any other, uh, park that has been mentioned. Nothing can compare to this property that could generate for generations to come. I hear we're talking about COVID, I understand that, but COVID's gonna come to an end. That's not in perfect, and, and, you know, forever. You know, in eighteen months, COVID should be a thing of the past. And the revenue is, uh, is there. So, in conclusion, uh, I think this would be a lost opportunity that will never present itself to the city of St. Cloud again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. Madam Clerk, do we have?
Next I have Jackie Eggleton.
Jackie?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
I sure can, will you please share your name and address for the record?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Blackwell and all council members. I am Jackie Eggleton, and I live at forty-eight-seventy-two Chisholm Park Trail. I've lived here for twenty years now. I would like to start with addressing Councilmember Cooper's concerns at the last meeting and tonight on why we need this land to preserve it when we have Chisholm Park right here, which I live at. I've lived at Chisholm Park for twenty years now, and yes, I took my boys there to fish and boat and ride their bikes as they were growing up. But Chisholm Park is very limited, I know, I live here. There is a big difference in Chisholm Park and the Hastings Ranch property. Number one, the ranch is a much larger property with a lot more land and a lot more room to grow and expand over the years. The ranch already has an existing building there, the barn, which is already equipped with AC, an event venue for rentals both day and night, rain or shine, fifty-two weeks a year, plus outdoor shelter that already exists. The ranch already generates revenue and is booked solid. Larger outdoor capacity for events such as fundraisers and festivals. It also has a natural outdoor water area to enjoy. You can put trails there, horse trails, walking trails, exercise trails. The ranch also has the endless opportunity for adding amenities to the park, even another maybe indoor/outdoor venue somewhere in the future, if needed. And that will generate even more revenue than it does now. Larger access for larger events and easy access for all the local area residents that are being built around the ranch to walk or drive or ride their bikes to the park. Chisholm Park has great picnic pavilions, and they are okay. And I used to take my boys there for a daytime birthday party, but that is it. There is no indoor venue, no nighttime venue to rent, no nighttime activities available at Chisholm Park, no AC barn that you can rent for various reasons. The park has very limited space for parking, especially when the boat trailers and vehicles are there, I know. And we have a once-a-year battle in Narcissi Mill. It does not gen- generate a lot of income-revenue opportunities. Chisholm Park cannot accommodate our growth. It is already passed on weekends. The ranch has the enormous endless income opportunity and can continue to grow as our communities grow. And we all know this land is beautiful. It's in a great location with all the recent and upcoming growth in that area. We need this great balance of nature and green space along with our homes and businesses. This is our duty to use these funds to preserve this land for all to enjoy. That's what this money is for. Unlike all of our other parks, this land has endless opportunity for growth and income revenue while preserving it. We get the best of both, and that is rare. Um, this is definitely a positive for St. Cloud, all of St. Cloud, to be able to say twenty years from now, thank God we did preserve that land for a park. You can say that you were proudly part of that. I can guarantee you, it will be a decision that you all will feel great about, and many generations to come will be thankful to all of us for preserving this park. There will be no park comparable to this park for generating income now and in the future. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jackie. Madam Clerk, who do we have next?
Next we have Colby Urban.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, please state your name and address for the record.
Colby Urban, two-two-three-nine, Summer Ray Court, St. Cloud, Florida, three-four-seven-seven-two. Uh, thank you, Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this tonight. As a lifelong resident of St. Cloud, I care deeply about controlling development and preserving our city's natural beauty for generations to come. The funds allocated to purchase this property to be used specifically for parks will guarantee preservation of the property in an underserved area of our city, instead of the alternative, which we know would almost certainly bring more development that we do not need. I believe that this park would be a significant addition to our city, leaving a legacy for the original settlers of Narcissi and allowing for generations of residents after us to enjoy some of the greatest natural features St. Cloud has to offer. I ask that you please vote to acquire this property, which makes sense fiscally and sustainably, and will prevent more unwanted housing development that will impact our water, roads, and public safety. Thank you, that's all for me.
Thank you, Colby. Madam Clerk, you have?
Next I need to read into the record. I have a statement from Jeremy Fettser, fourteen-oh-five-one, Isomarada Drive, Orlando, three-two-eight-three-seven. He wanted to state that he is in support of the acquisition of the Hastings Ranch. Next I have Ariel Hartney, one-nine-nine, East Cedarwood Circle, Kissimmee, Florida, three-four-seven-four-three. I would like my comments read into the record for tonight's meeting, please, regarding item four. There is not enough information provided about Hastings Ranch. I would like the city mayor to discuss where the money will come from exactly and the timeframe involved in the development of the property. Where do you expect it to be ready for St. Cloud residents to use? Are there costs not yet factored in, such as insurance, fire, and police services associated with the property if St. Cloud were to purchase it? Has anyone considered the most residents wouldn't use a park because they are, there are closer facilities available? Lots of questions need to be answered before decisions made. I wonder if Stevens Plantation can be utilized as a green space instead? The next one I have is from Michael Leela, twenty-four-twenty-three, Regent Way, Kissimmee, Florida, three-four-seven-five-eight. Thank you, Council, I am commenting on Council action item number four, the purchase of Hastings Ranch. I see a lot of great things with the right people that could come out of this, such as preserving beautiful land and then putting it to good use with proper maintenance as such. However, I also find it equally disturbing, given such issues as the economic crisis we're in, the St. Cloud water, to name a few. Given other broken promises from other local governments, such as down-the-road Split Oak, we do not have much trust that this will not turn out as currently hoped when push comes to shove from developers in the near future. Unless there is some way to purchase and promise to keep this land as such forever, then all we see is today's opportunity eventually be in exchange for future deals. More important, over five million dollars can do a lot of good for a lot of people with today's crucial problems in St. Cloud. And while I do understand that there is allocated for other uses, this money could be reallocated to help St. Cloud's family of citizens today. Personally, there is a good deal on land I am interested in out of state. Because of the uncertainty of future income due to job furlough and more pressing financial issues with my city family, we have had to allocate that money earmarked for this retirement land investment. So, it is... So, it is difficult for many of us to understand how a city cannot reallocate funds during pressing times. Thank you for letting me add a perspective that needs clarity for many of us. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mazzaris?
Yes, sir.
Could you please speak to the issue of how recreation funds are dedicated funds?
I think Ms. Colazo, uh, touched on the issue. These funds that the city is talking about using for Hastings Ranch are, are specifically parks and recreational impact fees. And impact fees are, as you all know, are, are a method and a, and a, uh, system that a municipality or a county can use to essentially provide that future growth pays for the additional capacity it needs to make to provide certain services. So, as you know, the city has, in addition to parks and recreation impact fees, it has public safety impact fees, it has water and sewer impact fees, and it has mobility fees, which are similar to impact fees. The purpose of all these fees, uh, is to ensure that as, as new development comes into the city and new citizens come into the city, that there will be capacity available to provide the services that the city is required to provide. Parks and recreation is one of the vital services that every municipality provides. Some provide to a great extent than others, but the city of St. Cloud provides theirs at a very high level. That high level is what the impact fees, parks and rec impact fees, have been calculated to provide. So, your system, when they were adopted by the ordinance, that is the parks and recreation impact fees, is based on an allo- uh, an understanding that we, that the city is going to maintain a certain level of service for all of its future residents. And the future is a horizon that frankly could go out years and years to come. So, the, 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 the issue of using these fees, and we've heard folks talk about reallocating the fees for other purposes, uh, the problem with that, and I, and I have to strongly caution the city council on this issue, is that because of the analysis and how impact fees are collected, they are collected again to pay for that future growth. In properties that come into the city and are developed, pay those impact fees. The folks that live in the city and have lived in homes for years are not paying those impact fees. It's the new homes that are being built that are, upon which the impact fees are being charged. So, what that means, that is if you use the funds for something other than they were determined to be, then the courts have been very strong and consistent on that. If they're not used to pay for the future development tied to the new projects, the new homes that are built, the future needs from a, for the capacity to provide this, the level of service for parks and recreation, then the funds are deemed to be an improper and additional tax. And as you all know, the city has limited tax authority, and so you cannot go beyond that tax authority by using funds that were, that were derived for a specific purpose to put into the general fund, to use for other purposes. Uh, and, uh, that would be essentially an improper tax, and that would, would cause, in our view, would cause the city's impact fee structure to be struck down by court if challenged. I hope that answers your questions, dear.
Yes, sir, that is, I believe, very helpful. Thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to speak, and then I'll allow the, uh, council members to, uh, offer their input. You know, I believe that Hastings Ranch, uh, is an incredible opportunity that we have now, that if we don't make this decision to purchase this property, it will be gone quickly. And I believe it will be gone forever. Uh, to me, when you look at the financial, uh, picture of the funds that are available and then the potential grant money that could help offset, but even the other, uh, monies that are coming from the county, it, to me, it just makes incredible financial sense and, uh, would be a, uh, a very poor decision if we turned it down. Uh, I think it's also significant that the purchase of this property actually reduces development growth uh, in, in, that's impacting our city. Uh, and so I could go right down and just relist all the things that were, uh, already addressed. One of the things I like about this property that is significantly different from the Stevens property, uh, is the, the beautiful pristine lake, uh, that is on Stevens Ranch that would be ideal for canoeing and kayaking, uh, whereas, you know, you just don't have that same, uh, type of asset, uh, that Chisholm Park, and you certainly don't have that at all on, on Stevens. I also like the fact that this is a piece of property that generates revenue uh, to help offset the maintenance cost, and, uh, I believe has the potential to generate a profit, uh, especially with venues that have already been quite successful there that could be continued and added. And so I just believe this is a, a wise purchase. Uh, you, we can't use this money, uh, as we have heard, and direct it toward infrastructure or anything else in the city. It has to go for what it is designed for. And so I would encourage the council, uh, to vote in favor of making this purchase, as I will. Thank you. Would any other council members like to speak to this item? And could we change the screen so I can see all of the council members now? Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you so much. Mayor, when you were doing your, um, comments, you mentioned the pristine lake on Stevens Ranch. You meant Hastings Ranch.
I meant Hastings, thank you.
Yeah. Um, well, so I wanted to give a little history from my perspective. Um, it had been over a year ago, I found out that, um, that Hastings Ranch was a potential, um, for, you know, the city to be able to buy for a park. And I went out on the, to the property with the Parks and Rec Director, and, you know, I had been on the property before to like a wedding reception, but I had never really been through the property, you know. So, we spent a couple hours riding around, looking at things, and it was myself and the Parks Rec Director and the, the owners. And, uh, when I left, you know, we kinda, myself and, um, Ms. Holcamp kinda powwowed by the back of her car, and we were both really excited about the prospect of this park. And so then we, she reached out to the rest of the council members, and I believe all the council members ended up going out and having a tour. So, um, when I was elected four years ago, almost four years ago, I made a promise, um, that was to control growth. And I've worked very, very hard to, uh, keep this promise. And I've pushed for raising the impact fees. We've had increased architectural standards. We've enhanced the sign and lighting ordinances. We've enhanced accessory building structure, um, requirements. All of this was to try to control the growth and to maintain our, um, small-town feel that we have. So, we have a choice here tonight. Do we preserve this land as a park? Do we limit growth and protect our community? The funding, as we've talked about multiple, multiple times tonight, comes from the Parks and Rec impact fees. This cannot be used for other purposes. We can't fund the police. We can't fund the fire department. We can't send it to fix drainage issues. We can't use it to fix the water and sewer issues. You know, if, if I have a chance of taking this dedicated funding source to protect this land, to limit growth, and protect our small-town feel, this is a no-brainer. It's a resounding yes for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Asquith?
I'm thinking, Mayor. Um, I guess for the record, I've said it before, I've met with the, uh, sellers throughout the year and as we've been bouncing this ball around. Um, it's very interesting, we've, um, this council has approved, I don't know if all of us approved it, but, uh, we approved a park on Virginia Avenue. Staff, um, financing, the city manager, what a great job they did. The confidence level I have is, is very high. When I first got into office, it wasn't so high. Um, but now that we have staff in place and the directors, that's, um, and everyone seems to be working together, and I think that's, uh, the help of, uh, Bill Sturgeon putting everybody together. Um, I have full confidence that we can stop eight hundred houses from going in Hastings Ranch, and we could probably make it into a beautiful park, because, uh, we've done it before. We've done it within a year, and I think we can do it again. So, I am, uh, definitely for the park. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, uh, looks, looks like to me, in the, in the past, um, it seems like to me, uh, as long as O U C was gonna purchase it and give, give it to the city of St. Cloud, that, I, two, three months ago, I was all, all in favor of it. And now that, now that we're, you know, changing up the, the tomb, because it's, it is, it has changed. O U C wants to take care of the power plant and stuff like that. As long as, that I could ever see, that no developer could ever touch it or get to it, I mean, it's gotta stay in, in the city of St. Cloud. And Dan Manzares, is there any way that we could put that in writing that it would never, never get moved from that?
Mr. Mazzaris?
Well, a- as I said earlier, I, I think you have two potentials that would do it. The contract provides that the property will always be used as a park. The, the, uh, uh, and then if you were to get the FCT money, uh, you could, uh, it would require, and part of that grant requirement would, that would remain as a passive park or at least a park. You, e- even if, Mr. Cooper, to answer your question, even if the ci- this city council were to adopt a resolution or even an ordinance, it doesn't mean that a future city council couldn't change that. So, really, the only way that that could be locked in, I think was the question you were asking, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Would be to try to have a provision like that placed into the city charter, which would require a vote of the, of the electors. Uh, I'm pretty comfortable that the council wouldn't object to moving forward with that. Um, but that's the only way to truly lock it in, and, and there... So, i- again, if you were, if this, if this council said, "We're gonna approve this item, but we wanna make sure it's always used for a park", that doesn't mean a future council ten years down the road could, could, could come back and say, "We don't care what they said back in twenty-twenty." So, I hope that answers your question. I think that would be the next step, and if that's how the council wants to proceed, uh, that certainly could be something that you, you could do.
So, Dan, there is a, there is a provision or some way that you could get it started, at least tie it up so that would only stay in, in the city and not, not for a developer down the road? I don't think anybody wants to do that. I understand that.
And my recommendation is if that's the direction of the city council, that we would work towards having the council adopt a charter amendment that would be placed into the city charter, and it would, uh, that, and then, if that's the case, down the road, if, if a future city council wanted to change that, there'd have to be a vote of the citizens to change it.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
I guess I'm just a little bit worried about down the road, COVID-nineteen or anything that comes down the road, you know, if the, the bottom falls out and there's no more new homes in construction, we don't have the money coming in. We're gonna be, we're gonna be strapped as far as money to keep paying for that. As long as we can figure out how to do that and keep it going, I don't have a problem. But it is, I'm kinda tou- I'm to- tossed between both sides. You know, I understand, I would like to have it. Definitely would, and I think everybody does. But how do we make sure that that money is gonna be there in the next five, ten, fifteen years down the road that we can keep paying this? And I understand that Wendy has told us that, you know, at least they think there's money every, every year that they can, at least revenue-neutral, but I don't know if that's, if I can believe that can happen all the time. That's where I'm coming from.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate all of the residents' comments and, um, that everyone's en- engaged in this. I like seeing, um, everyone out and active about, uh, some of the topics we're talking about. Um, like I've said this before, this is a beautiful property. The Hastings have done a great job with it. Um, some of the events they do, especially for nonprofits and, uh, folks of need, is, is really great. Um, you know, w- we all talk about having, putting limits on the size of the city. And this is one of those instances where this is the edge of the city, and we're taking seven million dollars of, of city impact fees and putting it kind of on the edge of the city. So, I just wanna think about that of, you know, if this investment is made, then does that just open the, the floodgates to annex everything north of it to, to make sure that this isn't on the edge of the city? Um, you know, I, that, I'm not, I'm not in favor of purchasing the property, um, not because I don't think that our park staff can run a great facility. I think they can. Um, I think we have the best parks department in central Florida. It's, it's the dollars and cents of it. Um, you know, to me, like I said, when we were going through with the grant application a couple weeks ago, if, if we get the sixty-forty grant, um, in August of twenty-twenty-one, I think this is a no-brainer. Uh, but right now, there's just that, that gap between January, when we have to close on the property, and August, when, when we, when and if we get, uh, a word of this grant money. That's my biggest concern. Um, and then, an- another thing is, we, we put time, and staff puts time, into putting together five-year capital plans, and, um, a couple of the items that the Parks and Rec Department put into their five-year capital plan, which ends in twenty-twenty-three, is a trail extension from the lakefront to Chisholm Park. Some improvements, Topkins Park, the Skate Park, and Lake Shore Park, uh, an Extreme Wheel Complex, and then also a sec- Second Civic Center Complex. That's eleven point six million dollars that, um, city staff was trying to save money for, budget for, and plan for improvements for the residents. I think this, putting all our eggs in this basket for, for especially a private and events-type, um, area, doesn't really make sense when we, we know we have a need for the Civic Center and some of the facilities that we have, the pool, um, you know, basketball courts there. Everything that we have at, at our, at our current Civic Center, we have another need for that. Um, there's also a bunch of neighborhoods, specifically on the south side of town, that don't have any, any even cot lots or playground areas within, uh, their neighborhood. Canoe Creek, uh, Canoe Creek Lake, Sawgrass, Keystone, Sweetwater, Camelot, uh, Canoe Creek Woods, Southern Pines. A lot of these neighborhoods don't have any, any park or recreation facilities close to them, walking distance, uh, for children. So, that to me is where we need to invest some of these funds. Um, and then, last meeting, I brought up, um, an idea, um, that I ended up throwing out there, and then I had a discussion with Mr. Hastings, and he wasn't a big fan of it. Um, but just buying the western portion of the property, the, the area where the Borrow Pit Lake is, and we can do a trail around it, um, but, uh, just from my discussion with him, it's a, it's all or nothing deal, uh, which I understand his, his wants for that. Um, and then another thought is, the, the county is willing to give us some of the impact fees that, um, it should go towards the city, that two million dollars. What happens if we, we flip this, um, to try to have the county purchase this property? Because, you know, a majority of the, the use of it would be towards county residents over on the Narcuse Corridor, and we put two or three million dollars of our impact fees into it and have it more as a passive park? I think our staff does a great job at managing a lot of our active-type recreation, and the county does a lot of passive-type recreation, which is kind of why, um, uh, some of the other parks have transitioned over to city facilities, because a lot of that, um, that knowledge, know-how, and, and planning really happens on, on the city side of things. Uh, so all in all, I'm not, I, I'm not against the purchase of the property. To me, it's the timing and, um, the fact that the grant funds would come seven, eight months after, um, the, uh, the purchase of the property, a little chicken and the egg or cart and the horse, uh, issue we have. So, um, not really any questions for, for staff. Um, I just want to kind of put my opinion out there and, uh, see if, uh, I can sway any of the other council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input from Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, you know, Councilmember Trace makes some valid points there, but the difference, the difference for me is the fact that this, if we don't buy it, it's gone. You know, improve, we've got improvements galore that we need to do all throughout the city, which, you know, those are not a, a dwindling resource. You know, this land, if we don't, uh, if we don't acquire it, it's gone. It'll be houses, we all know that. So, um, for me, that, that's what, like, swings my vote. Um, and I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of, um, Hastings Ranch.
We have a motion for the approval of this purchase. Do I have a second? Second. We have a second from Councilmember Asquith. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Nay.
Councilmember Asquith?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Ms. Carrie is thirty-two.
And Mr. Mayor, briefly, so what that action means is that the city will, uh, advise the, the buyer, uh, the seller's attorney that we're proceeding with the contract, uh, will have to provide the second part of the deposit, which is another fifty thousand dollars will have to be provided. And that deposit will now be non-refundable, and the anticipated closing will be the, approximately the first week in, uh, January of twenty-twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will go back to the beginning part of our... With that, we will go back to the beginning part of our agenda. Public hearings? Item number one. M- Madam Clerk, would you please read item number one under public hearings?
Final two public hearings for resolution number 2020-214R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final ad valorem tax millage for the City of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2020-2021, the same being adopted prior to the adoption of the final budget for said period.
Thank you. Uh, so Ms. Colazo?
Good evening. Wendy Colazo, uh, Finance Director. I may be recognized, uh, Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, sir. Um, as by Florida statute, resolution number 2020, uh, 214R is the second reading of the final ad valorem tax millage. Um, the requirement of two public hearings, this being the second, is required in order to, of course, uh, adopt this final ad valorem millage, which is set at 5.1128, which is exactly 5.69% above the rollback rate of 4.8377. Um, for a definition, um, very quickly to add for the final ad valorem reading, of course, in Florida, the ad valorem, uh, the real estate tax bill is the combination of this notice of ad valorem and non-ad valorem assessment. The millage rate, just for historical purposes, is the rate of tax per thousand dollars, um, per thousand dollars of taxable value. And then to, of course, determine the ad valorem tax, we multiply that taxable value and it's assessed, uh, minus any exemptions with the millage rate and then divided by a thousand. Some of the ad valorem taxes, according to value, that are, are, are based on the assessed value of the property, a lien against the property, and then measured, of course, in millage. Next slide, please. This is a graphical representation of the historical millage rate for the City of St. Cloud, uh, with beginning in fiscal year 2016-17, maintaining the 5.1128 rate all the way through to the current adoption, um, or reading of this, uh, uh, millage rate at 5.1128 with no change in that. The comparative that you see in the red is just the rollback rate through those consecutive years, uh, paralleled, so you can see the comparison of such. Um, currently, if a, uh, our projected, uh, values for the 2019, uh, 2020 values were 2.3, um, and also increase in value was 149,704, and then new construction came in at 218,027, with ending values at 2.8 billion, uh, according to the reported DR420. Uh, with this being said, and set at a point 97 rate of collection and a millage rate of 5.1128, we have 13 million, uh, 13.5 million dollars of projected ad valorem. Next slide, please. That 5.11 millage rate, as I read, is needed to continue to fund, uh, increases that are proposed in our fiscal year 2020-21 general budget. 9% increase in personnel cost of $3,544,002 are due to and in direct relation to 11 new positions totaling $565,116. 9% in medical insurance. Um, to outline such numbers and give you, um, a little bit more, uh, history, if you'd like, in that fiscal year 1920 reported medical rates at $5.9 million. That is the city's expenditure, um, in pay that they contribute, which is 83% of the cost that the City of St. Cloud contributes. Um, the increase for fiscal year 2021 was a total of $6,335,436 for the city, creating a $350,000, uh, 350,784, uh, increase in medical, with the city also not only covering that 7% increase, but covering the additional 2% that the employees would pay, which equals to $17,916. The remaining difference of $27,202, which is the difference between the 377,000 that I'm reading on the screen and the 350,000 that I just reported of increase in medical, is due to the increase in stop-loss claims. And also, uh, those are in relation to specific deductibles coming in. Our demographics are getting older, as well as diseases are getting more complicated. And the influx of COVID-19 in the last remaining months created some deductibles that were over $656,000 this year. Those are the relations as to the increase of 9% in medical and/or insurance. Moving down the, the row, increase in retirement contributions. Actuarial reports are normally reported and give us a, based on payroll burden, the amount of contribution that the city, um, should have in place. At this current time, uh, we do with the transition between finance directors, as well as human resource directors. The finance director is the only one to, once the committal of payroll report is received and the actuarial report is received, uh, they are the only ones to communicate with the human resource director as far as increasing and/or de- decreasing the percentage of contribution that the city needs to do. In this case, with the retirement and also the transition, as noted before, for the finance director, those contributions were not upgraded at the right intervals due to such transitions. Therefore, we're going to need to increase the general fund by about 0.87% because we are at 14% at this time, and the actuarial reports call for 14.73 in the general fund, uh, general employee, excuse me. In the public safety employee for pensionable increases in retirement, we were at a set rate at about 25, 29, excuse me, um, percent. And current rates are coming in and reported at a whopping 33.35, which is why we have to increase the amount that we're contributing for the public safety, uh, pensionable contributions. And again, this is based on intervalled, uh, retirement reports, um, excuse me, payroll burden reports. Finally, position reclassifications coming in at $1,370,812, as well as other, which are miscellaneous re- reclassifications, promotions, things of that nature. And for this final reading, I have updated them for you to give you a broad spectrum of what the 1.3 million dollars is composed of. In the 1920 year that will fall into the 2021 year, there was 33 pay adjustments, um, in various departments. Um, departments such as legal services had two pay adjustments, finance, seven pay adjustments, uh, building, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Uh, community development, um, we had one, uh, police and public safety, a total of 23. In the promotion, promotional category of position reclassifications, we had a total of 74 promotional changes, um, during the time, with most of them coming in from public safety, uh, and community development, and also environmental utilities. Finally, there was nine reclassifications, eight salary adjustments, and 54 contract union adjustments. This was based on making sure that all 2018 and 2019 new step plans were implemented and outlined based on Article 34 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Um, this was done in, back in December of 13th of 2018. However, the reports for payroll and position reclass- reclassifications are done in a calendar year, so that's why we're still including, because it takes in consideration January 1st of 2019 in these reports that we will continue to fund in the fiscal year 2021 increases. That is the outline of the, um, millage rate and the need for an increase of $3.5 million with additional details as delivered by myself at this point. Next slide, please. Finally, the staff is recommending approval of resolution 2020-214R and looking for city councils' requested action to as well approve resolution 2020-214 to maintain the, uh, final millage rate at 5.1128. Thank you so much, and I'm open for any questions as the council pleases.
I will entertain any questions from, uh, the chamber or online. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone?
Mayor, I don't, don't have anyone in the chambers or anyone online for the side.
Thank you. Then we'll open up for discussion and/or motion by council. I can't see you. Who, who would like to speak?
Mr. Cooper?
Councilmember Matheny, I will start with you.
Thank you. I would, I don't have a comment. I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
Ms-, Councilmember Cooper, are you wanting to make a comment?
Yes, sir. I, at the last, you know, when we had a budget meeting and stuff like that, I said, I thought we ought to do, and do a rollback. I said, I think we ought to, citizens, and we've got this COVID-19 and everything is kind of tight and a lot of, a lot of employees are not, you know, they're, they're not paying, they're not working, a lot of stuff, they need some help. I thought of do a rollback on their tax bills, at least that would help. Uh, I think Mr. Askew even said, uh, oh, Mr. Cooper, I'll go with you next year and let's see what happens, so. Uh, I'm gonna hold you to that, Dave. Let's see where we can go, but, uh, I'd still like to see if we could do the rollback, but looks like I'm outloaded, outvoted against, but that's all right. I understand where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Councilmember Askew?
I, I don't think you're outvoted, uh, Mr. Cooper. Um, I'm, I'm right with you. But, um, you can see what the damage is done to the city, and I think you're going to still see some damage when it comes to taxes and things like that, and it's hurt our residents as well, so. It's a hard decision. I would love to roll back, but I think it's going to put the, the city's general fund into, into some pain. And, um, I'm not sure what's better or worse here. I work for the citizens, but, um, we're keeping it the same. We're not raising it, so. Um, I got in the office, it was 5.1128. I think we're still there, so I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Matheny, you want me to add a formal, a formal motion, please?
Um, I thought I did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
To approve, and then Mr. Askew seconded it.
Thank you. Mr. Askew has a second. Madam Clerk, will you call? Um, Mr. Trace, I see you. Would you like to speak?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to echo, um, uh, Councilmember Cooper's comments about rollback rate. I was 100% for it until COVID happened. We've got a lot of other, uh, infrastructure-type issues we have to deal with. Um, I think it's definitely something we need to look into next year. Hopefully, we, we roll out of this, um, um, COVID fiasco. Um, and, you know, can, can get back on, on the train and, and get everyone, uh, back moving. But, um, this year, I, I think we just got to keep with the status quo and revisit next year. Thanks.
Thank you. I sort of agree with that sentiment. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, could somebody tell me how much difference, um, for rollback from what it was, but is going to be right now? The difference, how much total money?
Mr. Mayor, can I be recognized?
Yes, you may, Wendy.
Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. The impact of rolling the millage rate to the rollback rate of 4.8377 would be a decrease of $729,255. Of that money, uh, we'd also, we would have to defer either some capital projects and/or, you know, reduce, um, some infrastructure that is needed at this point in order to absorb that.
Thank you. Ms. Colazo. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Oh.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Madam Clerk, will you please read item number two?
Final two public hearings for resolution number 2020-215R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final budget for the City of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2020-2021, the same being adopted following the budget, adopt, following the budget adoption of the final, final millage rate for said period.
Okay. Ms. Colazo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Um, my pleasure again, final budget, uh, reading for fiscal year 2020-2021 with resolution number 2020-215. This is based on Florida statute 166-241, which is a requirement of the city, of course, to adopt a budget each fiscal year through ordinance and/or resolution as stated. The amounts available, as listed on the screen, are from taxation and other sources, including any balances that are brought forward from previous fiscal years, as we're authorized to do. And of course, we are always at net zero with appropriations for expenditures and reserves equalling out to revenues with the adopted budget. Again, it's my pleasure to read this for the second time, the budget with a total of $178,938,250 is the proposed fiscal year 2020-2021 across all funds, through the General Fund 001, all the way across 650 Stevens Land Station Special District Funds. Next slide, please. Before getting into the review of the revenues and, um, in millions, I wanted to just confirm that all changes, as requested, have been done. Um, we did, um, confer with the 200,000 that was requested by Madam Deputy Mayor Matheny in reference to the stormwater historical data and analytical, um, testing that will actually be done, and we conceded to do it in fiscal year 20 versus 2021, with no need to change that. Um, the transposing of the stormwater and sanitation funds, as Councilman Trace noted, has been fixed and swapped correctly, uh, representing the sanitation fund correctly, uh, as well as the, the sewer fund as it should. Um, to begin, one of the biggest things I wanted to do this, um, budget year is provide, not only to read to you, but to give you a macroeconomic review of the purpose and vision of the City of St. Cloud as we move forward to a data-driven, you know, uh, mission, mission accomplishment kind of goal. Um, we're, our fund expenditures for the general fund are at $1,943,189 higher than fiscal year 2020. It was the city manager's guidance and also vision that we would stay as natural as we could to the previous year. And it is my pleasure to report that while in the general fund, it's a 4% individual increase across all funds, we increased the budget by a whopping 1%. Also, before getting into detail, I'd like to thank all the directors and department heads for their tireless efforts, um, when they, um, prepared, analyzed, and presented what was needed for each of their operational, um, divisions. And so I appreciate that partnership. So moreover, right now, with the economic fallout of COVID-19, the public health crisis, right? Um, I've implemented what I call the Colazo three Ts, which are targeted, timely, and transparent bud- uh, a transparent budget. The macroeconomic effect right now, the Corona outbreak, you know, uh, in the U.S., um, is sudden, it's sharp, and hopefully short. So unlike the Great Recession, um, I thought about this, and this is really not an open-ended crisis, but rather, how are we gonna fill and combine our learned, long-term plans and, uh, you know, repair our fiscally imbalanced budget? So we took this approach to review everything on a need basis versus a want basis, and this $178.9 million that you see is as diversified as possible as we can, keeping a conservative approach and fiscal responsibility at the forefront. Highlights to include in the general budget are 11 positions, as noted, for the, um, some of them are the Electrical Inspector Plans Examiner in the Building Department that will be paid through the Building Fund. There was three car- crossing guards in the Police Department, four through, uh, cops grants for the police officers in the Police Department, one wireless engineer in the Information Technology, and one software integration specialist in the Finance Department that will be transferred over to Information Technology Services. And then again, and two senior trades workers in the Building Fund. The increases, as required by contributions to the Pension Fund, are based on the actuarial reports, as I mentioned earlier in the previous resolution for the tax millage rate. Increase of our premiums at 6%, we are also absorbing the additional 2% that would have gone to our city staff and employees, with a total of $350,784 being absorbed, once again, by the city for the second consecutive year in a row. Our total contribution, as the employer, exceeds over $6 million, as noted earlier, and that $350,000 increase from last- and that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase from last year's five million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eleven. There was reclassifications of positions in various departments totaling about one point three million dollars, which have been outlined and explained, uh, through promotion, salary adjustments, um, and, um, any reclassifications needed for operational needs. There has been also, um, the proposed millage rate as listed, the five point one one two eight will stay current as it has in the last past, excuse me, the last five, past five years. As you see on your screen, the diversification of your revenues at one hundred and seventy-eight point nine is putting in fifty-four million, or thirty percent of that into the General Fund, or coming from that. Special re, special revenue funds, thirty-five point four million, or nineteen point eight percent. Capital projects, four point three percent, or two point four, um, excuse me, four point three million, or two point four percent. Utility funds at seventy point six million dollars, or thirty-nine point four percent. Economic CRA and Internal Service Funds, all coming in at point four, or two-tenths of a percent. One point three million dollars, or seven-tenths of a percent, and Internal Service Funds at nine percent, um, nine million dollars at five percent. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Final budgeted revenues by source for fiscal year twenty twenty-one is listed on the screen. One seventy-eight point nine, balanced at, um, nine point two million dollars, seventeen percent coming in from the fund balance, uh, for fund balance, thirteen point seven million, or twenty-five point four percent coming from Advalorum. Point nine, or nine-tenths of a percent coming in from other taxes, taxes, excuse me. Licensing and permitting at two point two million dollars, and, uh, and/or coming in at four point one percent. Intergovernmental revenue is at six point five million dollars, or twelve point one percent. Charges for services at point four point five, or eight point three percent. Miscellaneous revenue, three point one million dollars, or five point eight percent. And other financing sources coming in at one tenth, uh, excuse me, one thousand, um, zero point one, and coming in at two-tenths of a percent. I wanted to add perspective to your final budget, um, reading and add some current situations that COVID nineteen has presented in current revenue. At this time, we're at ninety-two percent of existing budget for nineteen twenty, and we are beginning to feel the impacts of COVID. Currently, right now, Advalorum is exceeding budget expenditures at about a hundred and eight percent, with a budgeted, original budget amount of ten point eight million, we have collected and in, um, and posted eleven point six million dollars. Taxes also outperformed, uh, budget projections at, um, twelve point four million dollars with an eleven point five initial budget set. What the effects of COVID are doing, um, to some of the, um, items, the biggest one being hit is Parks and Rec currently at three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars received in, with an estimated original budget of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. We are at thirty-eight percent with Parks and Rec at this time, um, with a budget capacity right now of ninety-two percent. We were expecting that, as, when we did the sustainability and test stress of the funds, we were expecting to be losing about twenty-six to thirty thousand dollars a month since the exception, inception of COVID. Um, state shared revenues at this point are about twelve percent behind schedule. We have seen a reduction of ten percent of shared revenue, um, allotment uh, over the past two to three months, and it will continue, therefore, this is the reason why I took the conservative approach to reduce the budget this year in shared revenues by twenty-five percent as we continue to see those percentages, um, with COVID increase, um. We don't know when that increase will come, but at this point, um, state legislator is report, state legislator, legislature, excuse me, is reporting a continued downfall in shared revenues. Charges for services are definitely providing, at this current time, an increase and/or subsidy of what we have lost. They are at a hundred and sixty-six percent of budget. Um, public safety is at ninety-three percent of budget and revenue intake, with an original budget of two point eight, with two point six million dollars collected in the public safety arena. This just gives you an overview of why, some of the reasonings, we have taken a conservative approach on the budget and reduced things like shared revenues. We are waiting to see the outcome and what it looks like in the Charges for Fees and Services Department, um, and we'll continue to monitor that as we will be providing P and L analysis and review of the budget, month over month, um, with the City Manager and Deputy City Manager for Performance Indicator, so we can monitor at an earlier rate. Next slide, please. Final budgeted, uh, expenses for fiscal year twenty twenty-one are balanced at a hundred and seventy-eight point nine million dollars. Diversification of those expenditures are thirty percent of it in the General Fund at fifty-four million, nineteen point seven percent at thirty-five point three million dollars in special revenue funds, debt service with four million dollars at two point two percent. Capital Projects Fund, four point three million, or two point four percent of budget allotted to those expenditures. In the Utility Fund, seventy point six million, or thirty-five point five million dollars of expenditures, and Internal Service Funds at nine million dollars, or five percent. And finally, Economic Development Funds at one point seven million, with one percent of expenditure budget allocated. Next slide, please. Can I get one, one more, please, next slide? Um, the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, one of those, uh, needs to be mentioned is the compliance and agreements at fourth, uh, with the St. Cloud Chamber of Commerce, established and beginning in October first of twenty nineteen. The city allocation budget to the Chamber is fifty thousand, and by such agreement, uh, the reporting of the use of such funds has been designated and is presented here, and has been presented to you all uh, before, with the diversification of the fifty thousand being listed below being used, um, as follows, with membership dues allocated at ten thousand, community at ten thousand, inclusion cost at four thousand, innovation at three thousand, leadership cost at five thousand, growth at three thousand, celebration at five thousand, meaning events, and education at ten thousand. The source of the fifty thousand diversification, as well as the P and L of the Chamber of Commerce can be located with the source being the annual report that we have received for fiscal year twenty, and we are in compliance and have received everything that is needed as the agreement, uh, um, allows. Next screen. The General Fund Balance projections, um. I'm gonna talk about it, because this slide was updated, um, with percentages, um. In the twenty, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-one budgeted year, um, the policy of twelve point five percent is listed in blue, which would be six point seven million dollars that we would need to have in fund balance in, in, in order to be compliant. The actual budgeted is ten point seven million in fund balance, um, which exceeds that budget, and we're at tipping over at almost twenty percent of fund balance, which exceeds the policy. Your goal, uh, that we set at this point is thirty percent, which would be twelve point nine million dollars. Um, so we are well within the procedural, um, limits of the policy and the requirements of such policy with almost twenty percent in the, in, projected for the General Fund Balance. Next slide, please. Um, at this point, um, staff recommends approval. I, I did, um, the presentation that's listed here, there was an economic review on the presentation, I think we have the, the non-updated version selected. But what it gave you, and what I wanted to give you, was an economic growth update at this point, with the St. Cloud, uh, Florida's U.S. Census Bureau current population set at fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine. Um, however, of course, the Beaver for St. Cloud, Florida, reporting at forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four. The net change between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen in population numbers right now is a six point four net increase over two years, or three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven, uh, person increase during those two years. The economy, um, report for the City of St. Cloud, comparative to the, the rest of the United States, I will read as follows. Unemployment in St. Cloud right now is listed at three point five percent. The overall na, national total at three point seven. Recent job growth in St. Cloud, Florida, has been reported at three point nine percent, and the United States overall, um, performance has been one point six percent. Sales tax in St. Cloud, Florida, at seven point five, commensurate to the nation average of six point two. However, we don't have any income tax, um, percentage here in St. Cloud, while the rest of the nation reports four point six percent in income tax. The income per capita in St. Cloud, Florida, right now is twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-one, in comparison to the United States' national average of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven. Our average household income here in St. Cloud, Florida, is fifty-three thousand, five forty-four, with the national average of fifty-seven thousand, six fifty-two. And then finally, our family median income is sixty thousand, zero, um, forty-two, with a national average of seventy thousand, eight fifty. In relation to the economic situation and the budget as is presented for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we will not be awarding any, um, increase and/or COLA increases or salary increase for any city employee at this time due to the coverage and additional cost of medical and dental, as listed below, life insurance, um, and also the impending variables of revenue. We think it's fiscally responsible to review what this, uh, COVID nineteen impact will be, and if at a later time it is determined that we are at a healthy rate and things start to levelize, that would be a discussion for, uh, at that time, um, for the budget. Um, debt service has decreased by three point two percent, um, due to interest being paid and those services of the outstanding in the capital improvement bonds of twenty-ten, um, the twenty-ten A series. And overall, that is the final budget reading for fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-one, and I'm open for any additional questions that you may have and that I can answer.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber to speak to? Decide.
I don't have anyone in the chambers or anyone online.
Thank you very much. We'll have discussion and/or motion by council. Councilmember Askew.
Um, I don't have a discussion. Um, this is, uh, been a, um, nice budget to read. Didn't come out the greatest, but when it was all finished, though, um, it was very easy to read, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Wendy, and your staff and your team, and Bill. Um, I would like to, I mean, if, unless, uh, council wants discussion, I would make a motion, but it looks like we have some lights on.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny.
Well, I would second your motion.
Thank you.
And I want to comment, like, are we on, like, a space odyssey? Does everyone have this echoing going on, or is it just me?
Yeah, I think we all struggle with that.
Like on an episode of, like, Star Trek or something?
Councilmember Cooper, will you want to speak or decide?
I just need a second, that's all right.
Councilmember Trace? Are you on?
I just want to, uh, thank the Finance Department for their hard work, and are you, is Wendy, are you patenting the Colazo three Ts?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna try to pen that, because that's what I live by, those are my three Ts.
Well, but just, just, we're looking, you know, as there were a couple, uh, folks that made kind of the, the recommendation or the thought for next year of, uh, potentially rollback, and then I definitely want to make sure that we're looking at giving staff salary increases next year as we're rolling out of, uh, COVID.
And I, and I would agree. Councilmember Askew has made a motion. We have a second for Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Again, Wendy, thank you for, and, uh, your staff for the tremendous amount of work that you've put in, so much, uh, all of the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, will you please read item number three?
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty dash sixteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately ten point twenty-two acres identified as Puffin Ball, located east of Live Oak Boulevard and south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, in accordance with, uh, with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter one seven, one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Mr. Mayor, this is Andre. May I be recognized, please?
Yes, you may, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Um, if I could ask that, uh, you ask clerk to also read the, um, next two items, since they're all related.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you read items four and five, please.
She'll be right with you.
I apologize, Mayor, I didn't realize you wanted them right together.
No problem.
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty dash seventeen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land, land use district designation of commercial to approximately ten point twenty-two acres identified as Puffin Ball, located east of Live Oak Boulevard and south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, providing for many of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan. Following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability and effects severability copied on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of HB Highway Business, compatible with commercial future land use designation adopted by ordinance number twenty twenty dash seventeen, for approximately ten point twenty-two acres identified as Puffin Ball, located east of Live Oak Boulevard and south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map. Following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication severability conflicts and effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Um, as clerk said, this is the final public hearing for voluntary annexation of approximately ten point two, zero two acres of land. Um, that's just, uh, east of Hickory Tree Road and south of Earl Bronson Memorial Highway. Next slide, please. By way of background, on this, on the Chapter one seventy-one point zero four four, the property meets the criteria for being contiguous and reasonably compact, and we did receive signed petition from the property owners for this property. It is adjacent to city limits on the northeast and western property boundaries, and the existing future land use within the county is, is commercial, and the existing zone in the county is commercial restricted. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities at this time. Next slide, please. It is consistent with our strategic plan goal for growth management. Next slide. Dear city staff at your meeting on five one, recommend approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash sixteen, and the Planning Commission at their meeting on Ju, on June sixteen, recommended approval based on the sixteen findings of Orlando and Coda, recommend approval of ordinance two thousand twenty sixteen, and the requested action for the City Council tonight is to adopt ordinance and approve ordinance two thousand twenty dash sixteen. Next slide, please. Um, this is the comprehensive plan amendment, which is the, which is the compounding item to the annexation ordinance. Next slide, please. It, the existing future land use, as it said, was commercial in the county, and the proposed future land use on this property would also be commercial. You may recall at the prior meeting of this item, the land use request was for mixed use. However, since that time, the applicant has revised the application from mixed use to commercial, partly due to the size of the property being too small to accommodate a reasonable and, um, proper mixed use development. Um, so we support the change from mixed use to commercial, because again, it is compatible with the general area, and at this time, there are no adverse impacts. and at this time, there are no adverse impacts to city facilities. Next slide, please. It is also, again, consistent with a strategic plan goal for growth management. Next slide. And dear state staff at their meeting on, uh, May first, recommend approval of ordinance two-thousand-twenty dash seventeen. The Planning Commission at their meeting on June sixteen also recommend approval of ordinance two-thousand-twenty dash seventeen based on the sixteen findings of the Land Development Code. When this was sent to Department of Economic Opportunity for, for inter-agency review, they had no objections to the proposed amendment. And the requested action of City Council is to approve ordinance two-thousand-twenty dash seventeen based on the sixteen findings of the Land Development Code. Next slide, please. This is the final companion item, which is the zoning map amendment for the future land use amendment and for the annexation. Next slide, please. By way of background, the existing zoning of the property in the county is commercial, and the proposed zoning is highway business, which is compatible with the surrounding area and also compa- consistent with the commercial future land use designation, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities at this time. Next slide, please. It is also consistent with our strategic plan goal for growth management. Next slide. Dear state staff at our meeting on Ju- uh, May first, recommend approval of ordinance two-thousand-twenty dash eighteen. The Planning Commission at their meeting on June sixteen also recommend approval based on the sixteen findings of the Land Development Code. And City Count- City Council requested action is for approval of ordinance two-thousand-twenty dash eighteen. I am happy to answer any questions, and I am unsure if the applicant is in attendance tonight.
Is the applicant here? Would he like to speak to this item?
Uh, Mr. Puffin Ball is in the audience, and he is available if you have any questions.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the chamber or online that wants to speak to any of these three items? Madam Clerk?
I have no one, um, in the audience or online.
Okay. We'll have a discussion or motion by counsel?
I'm moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty-twenty sixteen. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Counselor Member Trace?
I'm sorry, did you have your, were you want to come in?
No, no, I'm ready to vote.
All right.
Counselor Member Trace? Counselor Member Trace, did you say?
I think he's frozen.
He looks frozen.
Frozen. Oh, I saw him blink.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Counselor Member Cooper?
Aye.
Counselor Member Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty-twenty dash seventeen?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion from Counselor Member Cooper, second from Counselor Member Askew. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Excuse me, aye.
Counselor Member Cooper?
Aye.
Counselor Member Askew?
Aye.
Counselor Member Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
And then could I entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty-twenty dash eighteen?
I'm moved.
We have a motion from Counselor Member Cooper, second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Counselor Member Cooper?
Aye.
Counselor Member Askew?
Aye.
Counselor Member Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read item number six into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty-twenty dash twenty-six. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Article Three, Division Twenty, Section three-point-twenty-point-two, fences, walls, and hedges, Article Three, Division Twenty, Section three-point-twenty-point-twenty-one, flood damage prevention in, of the Land Development Code, providing for a higher standards of the city's National Flood Insurance Program, community rating system, and to ta- adopt a technical amendment for the Florida Building Code, providing for severability conflicts, codification, and effective date.
Good evening. This is Leanne Walker, Flaplay Manager. May I be recognized?
Yes, you may, Leanne.
Good evening, Council. Uh, Leanne Walker, Flaplay Manager with the city's Building Department. This is the final public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty-six, amendments to our Land Development Code, and local technical amendments to our Florida Building Code. Just for some background, since nineteen eighty, the city of St. Cloud has participated in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System. And in order to mitigate damage in our communities, in our community from flooding, and to save our residents more on their flood insurance premiums, the city is proposing revisions to the Land Development Code and local technical amendments to the Florida Building Code. Next slide, please. The city has consulted with the Florida's Division of Emergency Management, as well as our consultants with Wood LLC for recommendations, and their feedback has been incorporated into our proposed amendments. The amendments to the Land Development Clo- Code include revisions to Section three-twenty-point-two for fencing, as the cities received numerous calls related to flooding due to fence obstructions. Also proposing the fence installation requirements to include a three-inch minimum above grade to allow for the proper drainage flow. Revisions to Section three-point-twenty-point-twenty-one additionally for flood damage protect- prevention. This is, um, an increase of the freeboard of new and substantially improved buildings and utilities from the current sixteen inches to twenty-four inches in our special flood hazard areas. Additionally, we are doing local amendments to the Florida Building Code can- to be consistent with our proposed Land Development Code amendments related to the increased freeboard, and limiting the size of enclosures below elevated buildings. These proposed amendments are to further prevent flood damage and save our residents up to twenty-five percent on their flood insurance premiums. Next slide, please. The proposed amendments are consistent with the city's strategic goals for economic development, growth management, infrastructure, and public service. Next slide, please. The Development Review Committee reviewed these proposed amendments and had no objections. On August twenty-fourth, the Chamber of Commerce reviewed this request and offered one comment. Existing drainage requirements do address this comment. On August sixteenth, the city submitted the proposed amendments to the Florida Division of Emergency Management for review. All comments have been considered and included within this ordinance before you. The ordinance was scheduled to go before the Planning Commission on September fifteenth. Due to a lack of a quorum, the meeting was canceled. In accordance with the Land Development Code, a recommendation from the Planning Commission is not required for this ordinance. Upon approval, staff will submit these amendments to the Florida Building Commission, of the Florida Building Code, to the Florida Division of Emergency Management and the Florida Building Commission for their approval as well. Tonight's staff requests approval of ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty-six and re- and also requests council's approval. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Walker? Is there anyone in the chamber or online to speak to this item? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we don't have anyone in the chambers or anyone online for this item.
Thank you. Counselor Member Matheny?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Walker, I, I never can say your name right. Leanne, um, uh, when we were having my briefing, you had mentioned to me, because one of my big concerns was about, um, on infill development. When you come in and, and I, I'm not disagreeing with the twenty-four inches. I think we need to do that. But how to harmonize with the adjacent, um, existing, usually lower finished floor elevations, um, and fill. And you had mentioned, I thought it was a brilliant idea, um, to require more of a stem wall on the house versus, um, filling the lot. Um, did any revision go into this ordinance regarding that?
So, um, yes, we are taking that into consideration, and the infill lots in our grid area especially are a huge concern. Um, we are looking into the stem walls and other alternatives, special requirements for these infill developments. At this time, since this is expedited, we are going to need to do a supplemental amendment to the Land Development Code to get this one in, um, and then we will update that language in Land Development Code. We want to do complete research and provide the best alternatives. Be working closely with, um, the Building Department, Public Works, to ensure that we provide good alternatives.
Okay, I, I'm okay with that. I just want, um, I'm gonna ask the city manager to track this and make sure it comes back. I feel like, not, not you particularly, but I feel like we talk about a lot of things to get revised, and then I'd never know, like, kind of where they're at, or, or, you know, wh- what's happening with them. The other item, too, that you and I had talked about was the twenty-four inches is only for the areas in, in the, um, special flood hazard area. And I was asking if you could check into the county, because I believe it's twenty-four inches throughout the county, not if you're in, um, a special flood hazard. Because we all know, you can have your house flood not being in a flood plain. So, um, what, what did your research bear out on that?
Yeah, so I, um, looked into what the county offers, and, um, they are twenty-four inches above the crown of the road, which is a little bit different from the base flood elevation. Um, they off- they require, uh, one foot above the base flood elevation across the board and twenty-four inches of the crown of the road. Um, and then I contacted our consultants to sort of find out what best practices were for this case. And it, it turns out that a number of communities, they will do, um, the requirement of the increased freeboard for the special area, but separately, if they want to do an X-zone requirement, that would be something separate. So we would have it not in our flood zone prevention language, the special flood hazard area, but it would be a separate X-zone specific requirement, rather than across the board, is apparently how they do it.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to look into that as well. And then the other issue I had when we had our first reading, uh, which, if the city manager could track all these items in his, um, list, is, um, just about making sure, like, when infill lots particularly are developed and fill is brought in, which it always is, even if we do the stem wall or other ideas, you know, really keeping the fill away from the property lines with the, you know, several feet away from the property lines to make sure that, um, you know, they're not graded all the way down to the property line, just throwing all the water onto the adjacent, um, properties. Usually the properties that have been there forty years, and then all of a sudden they're flooding. So if we could look into, and, and I mi- I think Mr. Deathbridge mentioned that it wasn't really in this section, but there was another section that would have to get revised, but just to make sure we keep that on our list as well.
Will do. Thank you.
Mr. Counselor Member Askew?
Um, I am not an engineer, nor do I have a different kind of engineer. Um, the monolithic, uh, it seems like most of the stuff down here is monolithic. Um, the stem wall seems to be a little better. My friend built the stem wall in Ohio. It seems to be doing great. Would, um, do we have anything that's in there about runoff of, um, because I'm sort of dealing with myself. Um, I'm a little farther down the road. Everyone seems to flow to my direction. When we're building new houses, do we have to have a drainage system in place? Or do we have to prove that there's a drainage system in place? It's when you build a new house, it's not running off to the, I, I assume we do, but, um, I'm not pervy to all that stuff.
Yes, sir. Mr. Askew, this is Leanne Walker. Um, I'm going to defer to Nassim Gondor, our Public Works Director, um, for the drainage requirements.
Hello, sir. This is Nassim Gondor, uh, Public Works Director. Um, so, and, uh, to answer your question in regards to, uh, drainage, uh, for, uh, houses, yes, sir, that, uh, Public Works, uh, a grading plan is required to be submitted, and, uh, as far as the grading plan, uh, the, um, requirements of, uh, water drainage, uh, a way, uh, to be isolated into the person's, uh, property and away, and away from adjacent properties is, uh, reviewed and considered.
Okay, uh, next question. I'm sorry. So the houses are here in the grid. My neighbor, he's below the water line, it seems like, and every time it rains, his entire yard, is, do we have assistance with, I'm, I would assume there's engineers or something, or does the city have assistance? If he picks up the phone and calls somebody from the city, can they come down? And I guess they can't say what he can do, but I don't know. Like, how do you take care of all these properties that are flooding almost every time it rains? And there's a curb out front of his house. It's not gonna drain out of the curb. He's lower than the curb. So what do we have in place that can help these folks? Because there's a lot of them. I walk the city streets every day, and there's a lot of people flooded.
Ms. Walker?
I don't know who it goes to.
It's kind of like a fine line between Public Works and, and the Building Department. Um, so I'll let Nassim, um, step in on, on his part, but yes, we do get a number of requests. I work closely with Don Palahan, um, and we go out to, um, s- serve site visits, um, to identify what the issues are and how we can best make recommendations of what they can do. Um, sometimes property owners can actually do things on their, their own property. We do have fill permits, um, so that we show them, um, how it can be best engineered, so that they don't, um, adversely impact the surrounding area. Uh, we do offer that service, and I know that, uh, the Public Works Department is working on mitigation plans for the future for the grid area, but I, I don't want to step on their toes too much right now.
Yeah, it would just be nice to be able to give people advice, or at least free advice, and go, hey, get a contractor, you're gonna need to do this, and put a drain in, and do this and this, and I don't know, it just... It seems like other cities, when I go to visit them, they have things in place. They have fence permit applications already done, basically, and says, these are the fences you can do, and if you're building a shed or a accessory structure. We have ten different plans. Go ahead, you can use one of our plans. I learned that at the CRA conference, and it was just very interesting, and some cities like Tampa, for example, have some of those things in place where, um, the homeowner that's not a contractor, or an engineer for that matter, can, um, continue moving forward.
Um, m- Mr. Mayor, could I chime in?
Yes, you may. Counselor Member Matheny?
Thank you. Uh, I want to give you my perspective from twelve years in government. Uh, and, and my job, we do not go out to people's houses and, and give them any advice on how to fix their property, um, because that all kind of no good deed goes unpunished. You know, if it's, if it's, in, in my scenario, if it's city, if the city is impacting the property, absolutely, we would get involved. But if you've got a low-line property, or if you've got, you know, you bought a, a house in a hole, I mean, in, in my position, we do not make recommendations or, um, give them any guidance, because it always kind of gets turned around and come, come back to you. So you tell them what to do. They go spend five thousand dollars. They still have a problem. Well, then they're gonna, you know, come knocking at, at the door. But if it's like city water, or city issues, or a city curb closet, I mean, that, those things we would address, but like the others, it's a really like, like delicate situation. Um, you know, typically, it'll be like, you, you should need to hire an engineer, you need to, you know, do things, kind of give them those, those guidance. But there's also, and I'm sure, um, the city has this as well, the, um, Leanne, do you guys have a list of buildings that, and structures that have repetitive loss flooding? And then there is programs that you can do through FEMA to address repetitive loss, and, and what they do to address repetitive loss, if you get through the program, is they just buy your house and they raise the house, like, so they tear the house down, and it has to just stay like a vacant grass. Lot, you can't, like, tear the house down and rebuild it. It's like, if it goes through repetitive loss, it's just, it's gone. But I would just caution, um, advising on issues that aren't related to, um, city drainage.
Thank you. Counselor Member Cooper?
Thank you. Um, just a quick question. What, what are they doing? What's the requirements in Kasimi?
The Kasimi freeboard is one and a half feet, sir. Uh, we are going, which is twenty inches. We are going to twenty-four, sir.
Okay. And what, how, what kind of problems are they having at eighteen inches?
Uh, they're, they're at twenty inches, sir, and I do believe that it's successful.
Okay. Well, I, the, my main que- my concern is in the grid, if you've got a lot of homes, like Mr. Askew had said, we've got a whole lot of homes that are already built, and some, a lot of them are low, and you're gonna put a new one, new house in the middle for there's a vacant lot, and there's not a whole lot of vacant lots that I know of in the grid. Uh, you know, probably less than fifty of them, or probably less than that. But if you, even if you do stem walls, then I, you're gonna get back into, you've got more steps to go up into the front door, and going into your garage, stuff like that. Uh, your elevation's gonna change, you know, if you raise your, your finished floor Uh, your elevation's gonna change, you know, if you raise your, your finished floor for your coming in your driveway for your cars and stuff like that. Uh, you're gonna have another big step to come in on the side and from your, from your car into the house. Uh, it just seems to me that I can understand going to twenty-four inch on the new homes and stuff like that. I don't have a problem. Uh, I do have a little bit of problem with, you know, trying to be fair and equal for everybody in the, in the grid. And for these new homes or new, new vacant lots and they're gonna get bought up here in the future. And some down the road, they're gonna have higher lots and there's some of these gonna, like you said, I think Matheny said that, that we're gonna have some flooding, it seems like, no matter what, even if you do a stem wall or do the other. Either that or you're gonna have a big step up to come into the front door. I guess that was a question. How can we get, how can we, how can we work with the citizens in the, in the grid that have got vacant lots and they sell it? And the new, new buyer that comes in wants to build a house? You're gonna make them go twenty-four inches and put extra steps to get into the house? It doesn't, that just doesn't, that doesn't register me. I'm sorry.
And just to keep in mind, sir, this is Leanne Walker, Flood Play Manager, that this only pertains to the special flood hazard area, um, the first few blocks of just south of Lake Shore. Um, not the entire grid, but yes, it is a, a big concern of ours. The infill lots, um, we will put some special restrictions. We'll make sure to do, um, our due diligence, sir. And, um, if you want, uh, the Public Works Director to touch again once on the step issue with the grading plan, I believe he's available.
Well, but a lot of, a lot of it is, uh, from Fourth Street, Fifth Street on below, going down to the north. I understand that. And, and the east and west, that's where, you know, up to Fourth Street even, Fifth Street even. So there's a, there's quite a number of homes that are vacant lots and they're gonna be twenty-four inches and the, the other ones are gonna be low. You, you're gonna have extra big steps to get into that house or into the garage to get in the, into the house. If you can tell me how to do that without doing that, I'd sure like to hear it.
Yes, sir. Is the Public Works Director available to assist with that question?
This is Nassim, Public Works, uh, Director. Um, so, uh, again, um, the house is, uh, when a house is, uh, built, a grading plan is provided and, uh, we ensure that, uh, uh, we review the grading plan to ensure the water is being, uh, away from the house and it's not affecting the neighbor, uh, that it's not affecting the neighboring lots. But also we're, uh, concerned about, uh, the water entering the lots. Uh, and there is, um, as a house is designed, uh, the engineer records who's designing the, uh, the house as well as the grading plan. Uh, it's their job and responsibility to show that, uh, their design is not going to, uh, um, is not going, uh, uh, their design is going to be able to meet the requirements. And the requirement is to keep water from, um, impacting the neighbors', uh, property, but also impacting the residents of that particular house. Uh, each, uh, property is, uh, I'm sure, is a case-by-case basis. And like I said, there's a lot of skilled engineers out there and, uh, you know, they're, uh, well-accomplished to handle the task at hand.
Did you address the steps going into the house and in the side garage and into the front of the house and back of the house? Uh, two or three steps that are gonna be, I understand the drainage and what you're talking about. Uh, you know, stem, stem walls are gonna be good, you know, I understand that. But your height is gonna go up from, you know, sixteen to twenty-four. At least in the grid, I would, I would say it would looks, looks better to go to eighteen and try and match everything what we've got in the grid and not, not have two or three steps, four, four steps to go into that front house or in the back house or sides, side lot, side houses. You haven't, you haven't, I haven't heard anything about the steps or how you're gonna get into the twenty-four inches and keep the lower grid, lower grade so that you won't have any water on your neighbors. And that's good. I understand that. But you're going from sixteen inches to twenty-four inches and then you're gonna have a step or two to go in. Older people are gonna buy these new homes and, you know, and these, a lot of the old grid is fifty and sixty-two and a half foot lots. They're gonna be small homes. These are senior citizens, probably older people, maybe not. But a couple of steps going up there, it's not easy, especially kids and everybody else.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I just wanna remind everyone that the reason that Ms. Watcher is bringing this forward is so that we can get a, um, are we going for, I had it written down, I'm sorry, and I can't find my note. Where, are we going potentially from seven to five, which, which results in another twenty-five percent savings on flood, uh, floodplain insurance? So they're not arbitrarily doing this. They're trying to help the citizens in the, in the city and save money and have safer development. And I'm sure that, um, it could be designed in a way that there could be a ramp if there needed to be a ramp. Um, I just wanna remind that. And, and Ms. Watcher, if you could say what it was. I think it was seven to five.
Seven to five.
Yeah, we're currently a seven. Um, Osceola County, I believe, is a six. Um, I'm not exactly clear on Kissimmee, but if we get our twenty-four inches, we're going to be able to make a five category, uh, which is, um, not, not too heard of. So we're, we're really excited about this, um, improvement. And it will save our residents in the special flood hazard areas twenty-five percent. It also will save those in, um, not in the floodplain and floodzone X, ten percent other than five percent.
So, um, I would like to make a motion to approve, um, to approve this, this item.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for the approval of ordinance number twenty-twenty dash twenty-six. We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Askew.
Aye, and it was actually Trace the second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye ma'am.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Officer Carey is four to one.
Four to one. 杖子的 council action. Item number one, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty-twenty dash two thirty-nine R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida to modify a grant assistance program titled COVID-nineteen Nonprofit Grant Assistance Program and COVID-nineteen Small Business Grant Program. Considered phase one of the COVID-nineteen Economic Recovery Stimulus Plan to remove certain eligibility criteria, program guidelines that prevent applicants from, that previously received CARES Act funding, making, making certain findings, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this is Andre. May I be recognized, please? Thank you. Thank you. Um, this is an item related to our COVID-nineteen Economic Recovery and Stimulus Plan that the council had, um, direct staff to do. And out of that came a phasing plan of, um, allocating five, um, financial in, um, assistance to help promote the continuation of their sales and services during this, uh, place. So this was approved back in, um, May of this year. And types of funding streams. One was called the COVID-nineteen Nonprofit Grant Assistance, which again was the offset operational cost and it was allocated at fifty thousand dollars. This money, of course, came from the OUC Business and Retention Fund. And each applicant were, was eligible up to five thousand dollars per agency. The second part of this phase one was for the COVID-nineteen Small Business Grant Program, which again was to offset operational costs and to allow for business continuity. And it was also allocated to be used for working capital. The amount of money that was allocated here was two hundred thousand dollars. And each, uh, business was eligible up to ten thousand dollars, depending on the different criteria, um, of their business based on the size of the business and so on. Uh, next slide, please. So to date, what we have actually allocated, um, was fifty-nine, we received fifty-nine applications as of the reading of, um, the staff report that was prepared, which totaled two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So that actually exceed, would have exceeded the amount of money that was allocated. Of that, we, um, funded seventeen companies and retained about thirty jobs to the tune of forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, there were also seventeen companies that were denied automatically because they received EIDL funds and PPP funding from the federal government and from the state. And this was one of the criteria that the council adopted that said if they received that, those type of funding, they would not be eligible to receive any grant assistance from the city. Um, so what, um, we are looking to do is to request that we remove that restriction and, um, be able to allow those individuals that were automatically denied to be able to, um, reapply. The criteria though would be that they would still have to demonstrate that they're not duplicating the use of those funds. Meaning if they received PPP funding for say operational purposes or for payroll in say, you know, February, March, April, they could not use that, the money from the city for that same timeframe. They would have to use it for a different timeframe or for a different purpose. Um, next slide, please. So, actually, I apologize. Let's go back. Um, so one more thing I wanted to mention in the previous slide also is that, um, those seventeen companies that were denied, um, the breakdown was that for the small business grants, we received seventy-five thousand dollars worth of applications. And on the nonprofit side, we, we received ten thousand dollars worth of application, um, for that funding source. So, um, also of note, there, there is the remaining twenty-five, um, applications that were denied. And they were not denied because of PPP, but because they were either non-responsive or outside of city limits or did not, um, have maintained a business in the city for a minimum of three years. So those folks would not have received funding anyway. Um, next slide, please. So this proposal, um, to remove the requirement, of course, is still consistent with the economic development strategic goal and also the growth management goal. And staff would recommend approval of Resolution two thousand twenty-two thirty-nine R to modify the existing program to remove the restriction that prohibits CARE Act funding recipients from receiving any city grant funds. And the requested action is to approve Resolution two thousand twenty dash two twenty, two thirty-nine R. I have, have, have any questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone in the chamber online to speak to this item?
Mayor, we don't have anyone in the chamber or anyone online for this item.
Thank you very much. We'll have discussion and our motion. My counsel, Councilmember Askew.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I've been talking to some businesses downtown. I guess some of the wording in here kind of lit up, lit them up a little bit and I'll read it to you. If the modification is approved, the program will first reopen to previously denied applicants who were originally deemed ineligible due to a specific criteria. But after those applications are evaluated. I, I don't like that wording and I'll tell you why. Uh, a person, uh, that owns a business, every time that a PPP came out or any time a grant came out, you can't just go, okay, I'm gonna put another grant in it. No, you have to fill the whole thing out and do all the paperwork to it. Um, it, that wording there, it definitely lit up at least three businesses and they're like, well, I abided by the rules. I put my application in, although Andre already said it, it's probably they lost it because of other reasons. It just looks like people put their thing in, they got denied. Okay, they're gonna be the first ones to get it. So as long as we have some kind of, um, gist in here that everyone understands, this, by the way, is fantastic. Andrew and Andre and his team have done a great job. And I've only heard success, just that those two lines there just seems like it's, um, being more helpful for people who put in an application that probably shouldn't have put in an application. That's what it sounds like. So if we can change it, we're, get some confidence, um, that would be great.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Yes, you may, Mr. Stewart. Yes, sir. I'm gonna ask the city attorney if he can weigh in and see if we can make that wording modification right now so we don't have to go back to council so we can get this money out to the businesses.
Aye, that'd be great.
Mr. Askew, again, direct me to which language you're looking at, please.
So we're on, it's under the Member Random Report for City Council, September twenty-fourth. Um, it is on that page. Uh, page one of two, packet page nine forty-seven. Page nine hundred forty-seven. Um, and it's on the, these paragraphs under the label, but. Do you have it, Dan?
Um, well, I'm looking at exhibit A, which is the.
No, Dan, he's talking about the staff memo, not the resolution.
Well, Mr. Anderson, so is the language he's talking about in the, I know it's in the staff.
No, it's not in the resolution. No, it's not. So unfortunately, a, a, a miscommunication of the intent. The intent was merely to let those seventeen applicants know that it's open again so that they can reapply. We're not automatically assuming that they're gonna get funding and they still have to reapply.
Excellent. Love it.
That's solved?
That's satisfactory. Yeah, if they could just reapply, I, I, I like that idea. I don't like that seventeen people now are first in line when we don't know why they're first in line. I would deny, or you know what I mean? So if you applied before, apply again. It's a simpler way of.
I think the resolution and the exhibit provide for that. So.
Okay, okay.
Well, we'll make sure that's clear. Okay. Councilmember Matheny.
I was gonna make a motion to approve.
Again.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for approval, a second from Councilmember Askew. Did I get that right? Mr. Trace, would you like to make a comment?
Yep, I just, uh, I think it's great that we're, um, looking at the results of the process. And then I just wanna make sure that we get the word out, Marianna and her team, and everyone gets the word out about this new application and how it's changed to where everyone that kinda brushed it off because they couldn't apply can now reapply. Uh, but yeah, I'm in favor.
Thank you. I certainly am in favor also. We need to do everything we can to help and make it as pain, painless as possible. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for the approval of Res- Resolution number twenty-twenty-two thirty-nine R?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Officer Carey is five zero.
Madam Clerk, you read Resolution number twenty-twenty-two forty R.
Resolution number twenty-twenty dash twenty forty R. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the city's vision, mission, organization, values, and strategic goal statements as developed during the February twenty-twenty Council Strategic Planning Workshop.
Mr. Mayor, may I please be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, City Council. I am Abismal Abreu, Business Navigator for the city. And I am here to present Resolution twenty-twenty dash two forty R. This resolution calls for amendments to the city's vision, mission, organizational values, and strategic goal statements. Um, back in February two thousand twenty, uh, the City Council held a strategic planning workshop where the language, specifically grammatical and punctuation errors on the city vision, mission, strategic values, organizational values, and strategic goal statements were revised, uh, to include some deletions and addition of language and more specifically rewording of the economic development goal statement. Uh, if you may, please go to the next line. So this slide shows how the amended vision and mission will read with the addition of the recommendation that we're, uh, giving consensus at the strategic workshop. Uh, some of the language that was changed, not necessarily language, but more like the addition of the Oxford commas. I believe, uh, Deputy Mayor Matheny asked for that. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the only change that was made was the, uh, moving of the word civility towards the front and the deletion of the word honesty. Uh, since the consensus was that integrity and honesty both meant the same. Uh, next slide, please. And like I mentioned earlier, the economic development goal statement was, uh, there was a consensus to amend it. uh there was a consensus to amend it to what he reads there now. Uh and that was the only change to the goal statement that was done at the time. Next slide, please. And just, just to show that none of the other strategic goal statements were changed, they remain the same. And city staff is requesting council action on Resolution twenty twenty dash two forty R. And I'm here to answer any question that the council might have.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber or online to speak to this item?
No, we do not have anyone in the chamber or anyone online for this item.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Matheny?
Uh I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a second. A motion for Councilmember Matheny and a second from Councilmember Trace for the approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two forty R. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Brings us to item number three, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty twenty dash two forty-seven R, a resolution of the City Council, uh City of Saint Cloud, Florida amending the previous Resolution number twenty twenty dash one twenty R to extend and to relocate the remaining balance of the initial five hundred thousand from the Saint Cloud Orlando Utilities Commission Business Development and cus- and Customer Retention Fund created by the Interlocal Agreement of April twenty-five nineteen ninety-seven for the city's use funds to the city COVID nineteen economic recovery and stimulus plan and to the through, and throughout the fiscal year twenty twenty-one and providing for an effective date.
Uh Mister Mayor, this is Andre, may I be recognized, please?
Yes, you may, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the funding component of the Economic Stimulus Recovery Plan. And this was originally adopted by, by Resolution two thousand twenty-one twenty R. And um we are requesting that this funds be reallocated to extend our grant funding program into twenty twenty-one. Um in talking with our finance director, I, we discovered that the OUC fund has a shelf life of one year. And so essentially what we're asking is to not request a new funding source, but simply to continue what we already started in fiscal year nineteen twenty and carry it over into twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the recommendation uh is that it's consistent with the economic development and growth management strategic goal and staff is recommending approval to realoc- of, of, of Resolution two thousand twenty-two forty-seven R to reallocate the remaining balance, which is four hundred and fifty-one thousand from the OUC Business Fund into fiscal year twenty twenty-one to continue the economic recovery and stimulus program. And council records the action is to approve Resolution two thousand twenty dash two forty-seven R. I have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone to speak to this item in the chamber online?
No, we don't have anyone in the chamber or online. Thank you.
Aye, thank you. We'll have discussion and our motion by council. Matheny, council?
To approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Ocean Kerry is five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've already dealt with items. Brings us to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything this evening. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sturgeon, our city manager.
Yes, Mayor, I, I have nothing. I actually had something, but it was four hours ago and I think I forgot. No, I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. At this time, Councilmember Trace.
Thank you, Mayor. Um one item and then a couple uh notes. Um uh for a while, I've been talking about the traffic signal or the potential for a traffic signal at Deer Creek and Canoe Creek. Um I finally kind of worked through uh with Wendy kind of some of the fund balances we have in mobility and impact B funds uh for traffic and I was wondering if, if we could start the process for a signal design um at Deer Creek and Canoe Creek. I think it's been needed for a long time um for safety issues or at least looking into the viability of it again and getting another warrant study.
I support a warrant analysis. Yeah, we can't just put a signal up without one.
Although there are a couple others that are going in that aren't warranted, but um, okay, so and then um a couple other things. Uh I wanna wish the best to Chief Sylvesterus that uh recently retired. And um also uh the former city manager for Kissimmee, Mark Durbin, passed away this week. Um I just wanna put uh thoughts and prayers uh towards his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Askew?
Um I don't have anything other than I appreciate staff. I see them out. Uh we walk about six miles every day. I see them out there, they're in the sewer lines, they're doing all kinds of stuff. So I appreciate them jumping on this um this flooding issue we're having and i- in my business, I've probably six times heard in the last week appreciate the communication, letting us know what's going. So they're doing something. Um I saw the one video that they did on, I think it was Facebook or something with the city. They were sitting at city council and they're explaining the, the problems that they're having with flooding and I appreciate that. And I think the citizens appreciate that as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper? Thank you. Um Mr. Sturgeon, could you give me a little update? I've had some citizens that have called me about the lakefront down there. You're getting the shrubbery and the clean and all that stuff picked up out of the way.
I, I hope Stephanie hasn't fallen asleep, uh but I'll have her update. I, I, that was um actually on this consented in a bit. Stephanie?
Good evening, Stephanie Holcamp Parks and Recreation Director. So phase three of the aquatic vegetation removal um will be scheduled in October. We had just sent them, or we just sent them the agreement that you had got, that you guys had passed the last council meeting. So hopefully here uh within the next few weeks or so, you'll start seeing some movement down there of them moving the vegetation.
Okay, that'd be great, I'm sure. Um and though we're, we're, we are moving forward on New York Avenue, right? And the sound system?
It is, and like tonight, you guys, I got that messed up, but tonight on the consented, you passed the, the bidding process. And as soon as I get a timeline on installation, I will, I'll send out an email to the entire council.
Okay, so that'll be coming pretty quick then. I mean, we're not talking six months down the road, right?
No, no, sir.
Okay, you know, you, I, I understand you've got six or seven partici- participle people that will bid.
Yeah. We're talking
A month or two months or a week?
No, I don't think it'll be that long. We already know what the task is. It'd be really simple to get that out right away. Um it still has to go out for ten days, but we'll get that online. I, I'm thinking before the first of the year it'll be completed.
All right, we're gonna do it all, all, all at the same time? We're gonna, because we need some other sound systems throughout the city? We're getting
Well, the way we structured the bidding was so if we needed other sound systems like at the community center, this will be for phase one and phase two. We can use the, so.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I have like twelve quick items I wanna go over. Just kidding, I don't have anything. Everybody has
All right. Uh last Saturday, I attended the annual Chamber, Saint Cloud Chamber meeting. And I'll be see this or not, it's a clear but a nice little pack they uh wanted the city to have, recognize uh their partnership as a trustee level. And uh so they wanted to thank the city for that. Again, I wanna thank the city manager uh and the staff. Uh you know, I know you guys have been hammered a lot. I know calls from all, I'm sure all the council members you know, with uh residents complaining about flooding and water and trees and, you know, you guys have every, every reference that I've given you, uh you've gotten right on it, handled it well and uh the outcome has been uh good for most of them. And uh thank you for your promptness and the gracious way that you guys always handle that. Uh I'd also like to also say um my appreciation to Joe Sylvesterus. And we certainly hate to see his departure, but uh uh we'll be praying for him and remembering him as he has uh submitted his resignation. Also, uh uh my church has uh agreed to have a food distribution on a very large scale on Wednesday, October the fourteenth, starting at one P M. Uh there'll be boxes that are prepackaged from a national distributorship uh with forty-five pounds of food in them. And uh that will be available just for the first come, first served. There'll be about thirteen hundred boxes of food that we'll be giving away uh on Wednesday, October the fourteenth at one P M. With, with that, I have nothing else. We come to our information section, report section, Thursday, October the first twenty twenty, there will be a CRA meeting at six P M at City Hall. Thursday, October the eighth, twenty twenty, there'll be a city council meeting at six thirty at City Hall. We have issued the following proclamations of recognition in Carol Westmoreland Day. A proclamation in recognition of National Community Planning Month. A proclamation in recognition of uh Fire Prevention Week. Reports have been made available, warrant list number eighteen. Tree Advisory Committee Minutes uh for March the twenty twenty have been approved. The Tree Advisory Committee Minutes for July twenty twenty have also been approved and provided for your review. Uh with that, I'd also like to just say a word of uh sympathy uh for a life lived well. Uh Mr. Durbin was an incredible man and uh made a big impact in our county. With that, uh we will be adjourned. Thank all of you for your patience and thank you, Mr. Sturgeon, for your four hours of patience. Thank all of you.
Night.
Good night.
Night, thank you, Mayor.
Sleep tight.
All right, everyone.
Thank you, guys.